Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone here to our November School Board Voting Meeting. Before we get started, I'd ask you please to rise for the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Good evening, I want to welcome folks here. We do have a few board members who will be joining us via Zoom. And so you'll may be hearing from them throughout the meeting. And I think that would be Dr. McLendon, Mrs. Stratton, and Mr. Fidler. Mr. Feig, could we have a roll call for attendance purposes, please?
Dr. David Hamburger?
Here.
Allison Wilson?
Here.
Hunter Aarons?
Here.
John Fidler?
Here.
Dr. Ann Herring?
Here.
Michael Giappino?
Here.
Dr. Sharon McLendon?
Here.
Huri Miller?
Here.
Michelle Stratton?
Did we hear from her?
Michelle Stratton?
Oh, I said here.
Okay.
Nine present? Nine present, thank you. Okay, we'll start, we'll get right into our, our meeting this evening, and we're going to start off with the superintendent's report, and I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Minor.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. So, as you know, this week has been a busy one in the district. We did have the closure of Lorraine Elementary School. I want to thank the staff, students, and families who responded quickly to ensure the safety of our students and our community and let families know that we are meeting and working on making sure that students get materials and other items that they may need for that period of time. As far as the motions that are on the agenda this evening, they, they pertain to a proposal to return to full remote learning from the period of post Thanksgiving through January 15th. We are having quite a bit of struggles in terms of staffing. We did have a county superintendent's meeting today, and we are by no means alone in those challenges related to staffing. At this point in time, as of yesterday, we had forty-two staff members who had some level of quarantine that they had to observe. So, that, that level fluctuates each and every day, but I want to take a moment to thank all of our guest teachers, substitute teachers, people who do come and do that work for us. It's very important, as well as our special area teachers and other teachers who've been very flexible and willing to lend a hand to cover classes. And finally, our administrators who've worked diligently and collaboratively to make sure that we have coverages so that students have a teacher in their classroom. So it's been a challenge, but once again, we're very blessed with a tremendous team, and I'm sure they'll continue to, to operate in that, that way tirelessly to make sure that we're able to educate our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. Okay, we're going to move into the next section of the agenda, which is public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone in the, in the community, whether it's a, a parent, citizen, teacher, educator, student, who has an interest in speaking to the board on any of the agenda items that we have here this evening, or anything else that might be, you know, for the, for the good of the school district. By policy, we give folks four minutes to make a comment, and we're going to try to hold that this evening. Anyone who's making comments, when they get to three minutes, you'll hear a warning that you have a minute left, and then thirty seconds, you'll, you'll hear a warning as well. So we're going to ask people to come to the podium if you're interested in making a comment. One at a time, please, you know, maintain a socially distanced line if that's what, if we have a number of people who want to make a comment. And we'll, we'll just ask folks to be respectful and, and be orderly in the process and be conscious of where you are, you know, in the, in the area here. Okay, one thing I'd like to say? Before you start? Please mention your, please say your name first, and then your address, please.
Mike Hodawonic, nineteen Hayden Circle.
Thank you.
Did you want something? I'm up here to address the issue of the school and the no sports. I just want you guys to take into consideration, there's a bunch of kids that only learn in school. There's a bunch of kids that only learn from extracurricular activities such as band or sports and stuff like that. I was one of those kids. I only learned from coaches. I did not learn from teachers. I had way more coaches that I am close to than teachers. Last year, when you guys shut down basketball, I know you guys didn't make the states, but they didn't get to finish out their season. Bowling did not get a finish. You guys had the number one team in volleyball. That's huge. They didn't get a finish. Baseball didn't even get to start, lacrosse, track, all that stuff. So before you shut down winter sports, I just ask for you to think what you're doing to some of these kids. It's an elective, so they know the hazards, they know the problems, they know what's at risk. So everything's an elective. So I don't see what the problem is. If I know the risk, let me take it. The, the family I'm with, we had a death this week, and I'm sure if you ask that family, if they knew the death was coming, they'd want to do what they liked. And you don't know when your day is up. So if your day is up soon, you know, live it. That's all, you know. I just ask you guys to take in consideration for these kids to do what they love. All right?
Thank you.
Hi. Patrick Borha, forty Beecham Road. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. First and foremost, I'm in favor of keeping in-school classes and keeping winter sports on schedule. I have two kids at Exeter Senior High. I'm speaking tonight not as their father. I'm speaking here as a member of the community's healthcare system. I'm a doctor of chiropractic. I was an EMT, and I have an undergraduate degree in psychology. My background in education uniquely qualifies me as an expert in health and wellness. I've dedicated my entire career, over twenty years, to positively impact the lives and health of my community. I get people out of pain, but more importantly, I teach people how to get healthy and stay healthy. Unfortunately, during this pandemic, fear mongering and reactive protocols have dominated the fight on this virus. What is needed is a proactive stance on keeping our people safe. You may think that going virtual and delaying sports is a proactive approach, but you're wrong. It's the epitome of a reactive action just because of basing everything on the, the numbers that are being presented. I don't want to get into statistics today, but I do want to talk common sense and science. Science has shown that humans are social beings, and we need social interaction. And without it, our brains undergo neuroplastic changes which can lead to anxiety and depression. Science and research shows that eating a nutritious diet keeps our bodies functioning healthy. Science tells us that exercising boosts our immune system. Science has proven that getting sunlight helps vitamin D production in our body. Vitamin, vitamin D, sorry, it's going right in my mouth here. Vitamin D fights skin cancer, and it also boosts our immune system. Science knows that zinc, vitamin C, vitamin E, B vitamins are essential to our health, and science shows that depression lowers our immune systems, that anxiety increases cortisol levels in our bodies, and that these two things help to lower our immune fighting power and make us more susceptible to getting an infection. I think it's time that we actually follow the science. The CDC says that our youth are the least at-risk group out there. So why would you now take away in-school classes and take away sports when I've just outlined how that stuff benefits these kids? By continuing in-school classes and allowing winter sports, you are empowering these kids to have better mental health and allowing their immune systems to do what God intended, which is to fight off threats. Please consider keeping in-school classes and allowing winter sports as these are essential to the health and safety of our kids. This pandemic should be one of the greatest life lessons for all of our kids. They should learn how to stay healthy. They should learn how to fight back. They should learn how to stay positive when confronted with a challenge. The alternative, the alternative is no way to succeed in life. As far as the school district, and it's in-school learning, I believe you guys have done everything you can to keep our kids safe, and I thank you for that, and I think you should keep it up. And as far as the winter sports, I have two suggestions for it. Don't let spectators in. As a parent, I would love to see my kids play, but I would rather them play without spectators.
Thirty seconds.
And as long as you guys can give us live streaming of that sport, let's do it. Let the kids play, stay active, and stay healthy. The health and safety of our community goes way beyond making sure we don't get this virus. The health and safety is about making sure our kids don't have anxiety, making sure that our kids don't go into depression, making sure our kids don't start abusing illegal and prescription drugs, and making sure they don't commit suicide because of this.
Thank you, sir, your time is up.
Let's boost them up emotionally, physically, and spiritually, and give them the right tools to fight this virus and to stay healthy, as well as keep the rest of the families healthy. Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Warren LaRiviere, address is forty-nine Bent Brook Circle.
Sir, could you speak up just a little bit more so we can hear you?
Sorry, mask. Warren LaRiviere, forty-nine Bent Brook Circle.
Thank you.
Just, if I have questions, are, is the board able to answer that after the comment period?
This is an opportunity for comment. It's not a question and answer session, so.
Understood, so, so any, any, any questions I may have as far as statements that have been made would not be responded to, is that right?
That's typically the case, yeah.
Got it, okay. Well, either way, I, I am curious, when Dr. Minor had mentioned about other school districts within the county having staffing shortages, I would be curious about some of the details relating to that, as far as the numbers and things like that. While we have upwards of forty, you know, to say other, other school districts have their own, you know, troubles that they're dealing with, I'd be curious as to what the comparisons are. With that said, my, my position absolutely is we should not be closing down our schools. Going hybrid, uh, going hybrid was like, I guess, the best possibility that we could have done, though Wilson, I would say, is doing it far better. There, we, we know teachers that are there, they go to school every day, the kids are there every day, and yet somehow they haven't had any outbreaks. Somehow, they seem to be getting it done right. By contrast, I feel like Exeter is kind of out of step with the rest of the county. We seem to be the only ones doing this couple hours in the, you know, in the morning or the afternoon for our kids, and somehow we think that learning's going on, and then everything's asynchronous in the afternoon, and somehow we're, we're falling behind, I feel like. So, to go full virtual, I've got two kids, one at Reifton, one at Awatton, and my first grader at Awatton is, I mean, now she's crying her head off about having to go back to full-time virtual. She hates it. I, I don't know how else to say it. Maybe you guys, maybe that's the best program you could have put, put together, but the time it takes to check in and the staring at the computer and the kids getting loud, and it's just terrible. And the idea of having to go back nine weeks of that, or whatever it is that you propose, and whether it's nine weeks or, it's just too much. You know, if you want to protect the kids, make sure they're wearing their masks. But there's, there's health things that I'm sure you're well aware of, you're smart people, but to take them out of school, just like the gentleman before me said, these kids, they're, they're, they're not the ones coming down with it. You got staff members, don't know what they're doing in the off-hours, that apparently they're coming down with it, but the kids aren't. So it feels like they're getting punished for something that they've done nothing wrong for. So, what else? Remote learning, virtual, god, the class sizes are way too big.
You have one minute left.
Thank you. They're way too big. Like, things get unruly, again, the learning is, is way down. My kids have, have done fine in virtual, this is not like they're suffering, you know, as far as they're falling behind, like they're, they're struggling, but I feel like their learning is falling behind. They're not, they're, my first grader's doing catch-up from things that she should have been learning in kindergarten. She's not moving ahead. So I feel like to take them back into virtual, she's going to further regress, and we're going to further, further
Thirty seconds.
fall behind in the school districts. Got other things, but I guess I'll run out of time. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thanks for your comments.
Ted Snyder, nineteen Ridgeway Circle, Birdsboro. This is my thirty-fourth year teaching school at O&amp;J Roberts. I've always said Exeter and O&amp;J Roberts are very similar schools, same size, same everything. The only difference is one wears blue, one wears red. We are in a hybrid mode there. I have, my biggest class live is fourteen kids. I'm very comfortable with everything, I, I think it's going very well. Similar to Exeter, we have, you know, a lot of teachers, and the teacher unions have concerns and complaints, some legit, some not, and they have many absenteeisms. However, despite that, our uni, our school board voted last night to continue the hybrid plan and continue with winter sports. So they voted in favor of the kids. As the motion as to, excuse me. As to motion one, it seems like the main reason here is because of the teachers, lack of covering teachers and, and not having enough teachers to, to teach. That seems like would be the reason that you are going virtual. So if that would be the case, then you're voting in favor of the teachers and not in favor of the kids. As to motion two, at first thought, you know, I'm sure this is what the administrations are thinking, if, if the kids are not in school, then they can't play sports. Which isn't, in a normal year, yes, if you're not in school, you have to come to school, play sports, but they are in school, they are, they're in the only school that they're allowed, you know, the virtual. So whether they are virtual or not, that same reason for motion two for sports does not apply, because you're not going to have to get subs, you're not going to have absenteeisms. Coaches are a different animal. The, the AD and the coaches proved that they could do it in the fall. So you're not going to have to cover for sicknesses or anything like that. They will make sure, they're very dedicated, they'll make sure the kids have a safe atmosphere. As of now, all the schools in the county are going forward with winter sports, with maybe the exception of Reading High, which hasn't decided yet. After talking with the superintendent from Sookel Valley last night, even though they are going virtual till mid-January, they are going forward with sports. What is the rush to make the decision with sports? If you recall in the fall, the Big Ten was quick to announce, we can't play sports, and then what did they do? They saw everybody else playing, and then they, they got back to playing. Imagine your son or daughter not playing the sport, or, or in the band or musical, and all the other schools in the county are. Ask the kids, the fall athletes from Reading High, how that feels. Finally, and this was said earlier, but sports are optional. If you don't feel safe, you don't have to play.
Thirty seconds.
There are no grandparents out there saying, don't let my kid, grandkids play so I am safe. Allow sports, and at the very least, hold back the vote until you see what the rest of the county is doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Good evening. Good evening. Matt Ashcroft, thirty-five-five Mount Pine Terrace. I am the head boys' basketball coach here at Exeter. Just wanted to spend just a, just a minute, your time. Since we started in mid, mid-July, working out in the basketball team, we've had thirty-five workouts between lifting, open gyms, different types of workouts since July, between July and, and mid-November. With those thirty-five workouts, we have not had one issue. Our kids have been vigilant, our kids have done everything right, our coaches. We've received impeccable guidance from the athletic department, Tom McGath and his staff. Our coaches and players have done everything right. They've worn masks, masks, they've gone through the temperature checks, the question and answer. They've maintained distance, they've done everything right. Just speaking from experience, you know, growing up, sports was, was the single most important thing in my life. I learned so many lessons, you know, just a couple things of I built lifelong friendships, learnt lifelong lessons, developed some of those important skills in life, such as, just to name a few, competitiveness, work ethic, resilience, persistence. I'd just ask you that, for you guys to just, you know, give us a shot, allow us to try. Allow us to, you know, go out there, just like Ted said, the Big Ten, I think, looking back, they think they probably made a mistake. Some of the greatest times of their lives, these freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors, yes, they have in the classroom, they have with their friends at their, at each other's houses and whatnot, but some of the greatest times in their, in their lives, if you ask them, they'll tell you, are on the basketball court, on the soccer field, in the swimming pool, the football field, on the wrestling mat. So I implore you, just give us a chance, don't deprive these kids of, of this kind of opportunity, this experience of a lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Morgan Trucker Miller, two-twenty-three Sunrise Road. My name's Morgan Trucker, and I'm a senior here who has played four years of both soccer and basketball. We finished the fall season just a few weeks ago, and during the time, we had no issues with COVID-19 cases. The fall, the fall sports were given the opportunity to have a season. The same risks that were there in the fall are still here now. I would like for the winter sports to have the same opportunity to play as the fall did. As a student, I understand going back to full virtual, but we still need to be allowed to play fall sports, considering that is what we did in the fall. As an athlete, I just want to play, as do the rest of my teammates and other winter sports athletes. My team and I have put in a so much work over the past few months to get back to the team we were last year, and we would like to see all the work pay off. We just want the opportunity to be given the chance to play. For some of us, it is our last chance to play, and we, and to ever step on the court again. This is my last season playing for my dad, and I would like to be able to get everything out of it as we have planned. It has been my dream ever since I was a little girl to be playing for my dad, and to have him walk me down the court on my senior night. I just want that opportunity, and to live out that dream of mine. Thank you.
Wow, how do I follow that? Charles Trucker Miller, two-two-three Sunrise Road. Tonight I speak as both a parent of a current high school senior and as the head girls' basketball coach. For the past five months, the girls' basketball team has held twenty-four open gyms for junior high and high school basketball players, and participated in a varsity preseason tip-off tournament in Pottsville, attended by eight other high schools. During the course of these events, we have had up to forty-three players attend. We followed all athletic department protocols. We used the junior high gym, the auxiliary gym, and the main gym to spread out and socially distance when necessary. During this entire time, we have had zero positive cases of COVID. In the fall, a decision was made to allow sports to be played at the junior high and high school levels while full virtual learning was going on. The athletic department created a set of protocols to be followed by the coaches and players in order for everyone to remain safe. Because everyone worked together and followed the rules properly, fall sports had a successful season. No fall sports were required to shut down or miss games because of a positive case. One false positive caused the team to pause their season. This is evidence enough that the procedures put in place by the athletic department work. The coaches and players did what they needed to do to have their season. Exeter Athletics showed that it takes this situation seriously and will do the right thing in order to play. Give us the same chance. One of the advantages of winter sports is the fact that we have fewer athletes participating than fall sports. The girls' and boys' basketball teams have fewer players than girls' and boys' soccer. Wrestling has far fewer athletes than football. This allows us the opportunity to manage the situation even though we are indoors. Much of this proposal is being made based on numbers, projected numbers, and fear of what lies ahead. Dr. Minor provided numbers based on the one-nine-six-zero-six ZIP code. Yet last night, our neighbors in Antietam, who are in the very same ZIP code, chose to move forward with winter sports and manage the events as they unfold, just like every other school district did in the fall, except one. The BCIAA has not come forward with any decision to pause sports. Why are we different from the other seventeen districts in Berks County? Are we going to be sitting home watching everyone else play like Reading did in the fall? I could stand here and talk forever about the benefits of in-person school and sports and what they mean to these kids. I hope that all of you understand how important this is, and don't take this decision lightly. However, shutting down the school and returning to all virtual learning once again removes students from their friends, teachers, and social circles that they were just getting back to. Changing the routines for families causes even more stress. I'd like to see the district continue to manage this situation and continue with the hybrid model and winter sports to be allowed to play. Give us the same chance. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Colin Payne, one-on-nine Macy Way. To the Exeter Township School Board, on behalf of the Exeter Boys Basketball Team, I would like to address the looming school board vote to suspend the winter sports season. I do not need to reiterate the many, many benefits that athletics have on a student-athlete, the school climate, and our Exeter community. What I would like to ask is can we at least try? Can we try to begin our seasons while strictly adhering to the protocols that our district has set in place? Can we try to be responsible and understand that our actions outside of school may determine how our season can progress? Can we try to practice and prepare to get to the point where we can play a game, have a match, have a race, or prepare for a competition? Can we try it without fans? I can speak to basketball in particular when I say that it has been played all summer out of this county, county, and even out of the state by some of our Exeter players. Some of our players have just completed a fall sport. We were successful. We were successful, we achieved that success because we took the responsibility upon ourselves to be vigilant in all safety precautions, since we knew how precious the time was that we spent competing. We tried it in the fall and we succeeded. Now it is being voted on to take it away before we are even able to try. I urge you, for all the winter athletes, for the parents who would gladly watch on YouTube, for the E T H S student body, for the Exeter community, please just let us try. Thank you for your time consideration during this extremely difficult decision-making time.
Thanks for your comments.
Nick Nettleton, sixteen, six-one-one-three Washington Drive. When it comes to sports, lots of kids are dependent on them, whether it's for college, to pursue their dreams, or just to see their friends. Uh, with sports in college, uh, recruiting, a lot of kids will lose their scholarships and college looks as a result of these cancellations of winter sports. Ultimately, ultimately changing the lives of some of these kids forever. Many, uh, people will not be able to afford universities, will not be able to go to college. A lot of, a lot of kids need the sports regardless, and, uh, sorry. A lot of these kids are going to be playing their sports regardless, whether it's with the team or in a club. And it's up to you whether you want us to be under your protection or not. So please take into consideration what you're taking from us. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Michael Master, forty-five, sixty-nine Hillside Road. So during this whole pandemic that's been going on, one of the things that we have seen is people stepping up to do their jobs that need to be done. Doctors, um, nurses, people to work at Giant, to make sure you get your food, pharmacy people. I don't see teachers any different. Teachers are essential to kids' learning, and from what I've seen, you can have all the technology that you want. Some teachers are not suited to teaching virtually. They don't do it well, they don't know how to follow up, they don't know how to use the technology, and it impacts and it hurts the kids. I've spoken to many of the kids and asked them how they feel that their learning as a result of going virtual. And the ones that have, all of them have said that it's not the same. We don't get the same response, we don't get the same level of careness, concern, um, and it's not effective. Um, I believe that kids should have an option. If they want to stay home, they can. If they want to go in, they should be able to get, have that option to do so. I know that there's other schools that have made decisions that the older teachers, they can teach virtually, the younger teachers who want to come in, they can come in and make sure the kids are being taken care of. There's a lot of people that have put their lives at risk. Now, I believe that there's a lot of fear mongering that goes on with this virus, we know who it affects and who it affects a lot least. Um, I myself, I'm going to be, I'm an I T consultant, I'm going to be going to a hospital next week to be able to help a hospital keep moving forward. We, as a society, have to keep moving forward and doing the things that we need to do. And I believe it's a responsibility of the teachers and the teachers' union to make sure that they're taking care of the kids and make sure the kids' needs are met. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Shelley Astorian, thirteen-twenty-two Fox Run. Um, Astorian?
You speak up just a little bit, please, or closer to the mic.
All right, um, I just came here to listen, but I really felt compelled to come up and say something. Um, I want to preface what I want to say with, I agree with the other people about the fear mongering. I think the powers that be who are mandating mask-wearing and staying away from everybody, who are caught off-camera, being normal, no mask around everybody, and then giving a lip service apology, is, this is just bogus. I'm not saying there's not a, a sickness that is contributing to people's deaths, but for example, when my brother's friend goes in a car line to get a test and decides the car line's too long, and he leaves never getting the test and gets a mailing that says he's tested positive, I mean, that's just a corrupt thing. Um, and I, I just want to say that in the summertime when we had this lockdown, the numbers went up, it was spiked, the lockdown did not help, but it hurt a lot of people. Um, I see kids in school, they're begging to stay in school, they are begging to come back to school and stay here. They can't learn at home, they've got arguing siblings, they've got hovering parents, they've got dogs barking, they've got lawn mowers going, they've got everything going, they can't concentrate, they want to be here. And the lockdown is going to hurt more people because from personal experience, after seven months of being locked down, I got a call from my uncle, I mean, from my dad, telling me that my uncle, who lived in the house with his abusive son and daughter-in-law, took a gun to his son and killed him, killed his daughter-in-law, and then turned around and killed himself. And I can only imagine being locked down for seven months in a house that he's getting abused in with nowhere to go because everything's closed, no outlet. If a grown man can do that, think of the kids that may be doing that because they may be in an abusive house and they're stuck there, and the only way they can get out is to come to school and learn. So I just wanted to let you know that there are things that are going on in people's homes that you stopping them from coming and, and locking down and isolating them is going to do more harm than good.
Thanks for your comments.
Good evening, Kelly Riss Miller, twelve Ridgeway Circle, Birdsboro. I have three children in the district, a second grader, a seventh grader, and a ninth grader. And regardless of tonight's outcome, I will fully support the board as elected officials and do everything I can to help the children in our community and the families. But I do come here tonight asking you to please consider staying the course. Consider offering, still offering, in-person instruction, the hybrid model for those families with children that have found that to be the type of learning and education environment that they are choosing for their children this year. I have complete faith in this district for keeping our children safe even as numbers rise. I know that you're doing everything possible, and for those of us that are sending our children to school, we entirely feel that they are comfortable, safe, and in a positive environment. I'm a previous administrator at the Governor Mifflin School District, and I understand all of the challenges you are facing and all of the different opinions and emotions that this community is throwing at you. Also, as currently a director of Children and Family Ministries at West Lawn United Methodist Church, I understand how hard it is to deal with constant staffing changes. Every single week, we are constantly finding substitutes and new team members so we can continue to open our doors to children in Sunday School and to our congregation. It's a lot of work. It's much harder than normal situations, but I have confidence that this district and the staff and the faculty and this board can put in that hard work so that it can offer both types of education for the children. If there is a happy medium, maybe you could consider just doing all virtual for the week following Thanksgiving and the week following Christmas break, but not for the entirety from December first to January fifteenth. I'd also like to add that all of my children played Exeter sports this fall, two on the soccer teams, one on the cross-country team. Two of them compete at next-level martial arts, getting their degrees, and one of them's at Berks Gymnastics. In addition, they're in Girl Scouts and Cub Scouts and youth group. And you know, they, the people that are their coaches and their mentors and their advisors, they are doing everything possible to keep these children safe. Certainly, we've had our fair share of canceled practices, some closed meets and games because of COVID, but in general, they had an excellent fall season doing the extracurricular activities that they love, and I would only want the same for the winter athletes and the spring athletes.
You have one minute remaining.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Matthew DiPiero, I'm fourteen, I live on two-two-seven Poplar Drive. I just want to say that it's hard being virtual and hybrid, and we've, we should all go back. It's, it's harder to learn virtual because we don't have that interaction with a, um, with the teachers and with other students on Zoom meetings. And also, we should have false, winter sports, excuse me, a lot too, because winter sports just motivate a lot of students, and it keeps me motivated to keep going, sorry for stuttering. And, um, I feel like without winter sports, a lot of kids, including me, would have no motivation to keep going on and to keep trying to work hard in school and continue with their life. It, it's impacted me mentally, staying virtual, like I don't have my friends, and I haven't seen some of my friends in how many months, and I, it's, it's hard. We, a lot of kids just struck, like, are struggling virtually that normally wouldn't struggle when they're in school. A lot of my friends are saying that it's a lot harder too because they don't like, they're just missing interaction, and they have, and they get sidetracked, and it's so easy to just get distracted or walk away from a Zoom meeting as well, which is a lot, a lot of kids are doing. And if in virtual, when we're virtual, you get distracted, and when you're not, you're, when, when we're at school, we're not distracted. I'm sorry, this has been a mess. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, good evening, Heather Shore, four-seven-three-three Dunham Drive. I have two students in the district, I'm also a registered nurse at the Reading Hospital, who's been working every day since the beginning of COVID, and I am here in favor of in-school education. The students' mental health is suffering, forcing anxiety and depression onto them is not okay. Two and a half weeks into in-school, and I see my children thriving. Our children's mental health trumps everything, without it, they have nothing. Educational performance, as presented by a prior meeting, is proven to be on the decline. A large number of students do not succeed in a virtual model. Many don't have the needed supports. I know my children's performances are suffering with virtual learning. My junior high student failed all but two classes his first term as virtual. He went from being a solid A-B student to failing in one term. Just two and a half weeks into in-school learning, and his grades are already in the high eighties. How can you take that success away from them? I know my children are not even close to the only ones in the same situation. What is your plan if you make them virtual and a vast number of students fail their grade level? Is the plan to punish them with your decision by holding them back? Or is the plan to punish them and have them spend the next few years struggling to catch up? I would rather see individual classes need to quarantine for two-week increments than every student for six weeks straight. Our students are failing, are not failing, we are failing them. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Hi, Chelsea Arnt, thirty-nine Bent Brook Circle. I appreciate, again, being able to address you directly because I believe that being direct with one another is the best way to be able to communicate. I've been a teacher for the past twelve years, and it was very, I was very excited to see that another veteran teacher has been here to address you today. I think that being in-person, both with sports and with teaching, is vital. Now, mostly my experience is with teaching, but I've taught over a thousand students in my tenure as a teacher, and I know that sports and extracurricular activities are just as important. There are some students that I've had that won't put pen to paper, pencil to paper unless they know it's because they're going to be eligible for their sport. From my own experience, I left today, my son asked me where I was going, and I told him I had to leave. I told him that they were going to think about shutting down his school again. My seven-year-old is now, well, when I left, was under his bed crying. I understand the challenges that you're facing. Our school district is facing those same challenges, but we're pressing on. Our superintendent said to us, you can get content anywhere. It's not about that. And I always think of a song lyric, it's not, it's the in-between time. That's when the real learning happens. You can be there, you can support them, you can give them a kick in the butt when they need it. That's what teaching is all about. Students don't email me and come visit me and say, that lecture on Ignis Rocks really stuck with me, Mrs. Arnt. They certainly don't. They say, I remember you, I remember how you cared about me and you encouraged me. I'm going to college next year, and we have conversations. I got a packet from my own son's classroom saying, surprisingly not to me, that they are behind on their foundations program, they need to do more remediation. My son has been delighted these past three weeks, just being in school. I understand that we can't be full, and that's fine, but to have it to the point where he can't attend to anything at all, and you're saying that that's going to be the case for another six weeks, he will completely shut down. We've had that happen before. Okay, he, I listened to another woman who I see here is again tonight explaining how her senior kind of had a meltdown, but he apologized and he explained why. My son can't do that, he's seven. So instead, we get notes on his door that say, no school, I'm not going to go. So I please beg you to think about the decisions that you're making tonight and how they're going to impact the students. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, I'm Nadine Warner, forty-eight-twenty-eight Maze Avenue. Uh, Dr. Minor, thank you, board, thank you for having me tonight. Um, I do have a senior to, in the school district, he also is a basketball player on the boys' basketball team. Um, I'm not so much as concerned, like, the, the virtual learning is, I feel imperative to our community. I have a lot of kids that come to my home. I see children from infancy all the way to sixth grade. I watch them, I see them every day. They come to me. I see the ones that are struggling, and I see the ones that are fine with this. My own son is fine. He's not like the boy that just described himself saying, I can't get out, I am fourteen years old. We have kids that can drive cars and can go places. There are a lot of children that don't have that social opportunity. Other children just cannot possibly learn through a screen. It's too difficult. Some are hyperactive, some just can't focus. The fact that we need to be in school is so important. Now going on to the fact that I am also the vice president of the Boys Basketball Boosters Club, and my son plays basketball, I would like to address the fact that the sports have been very conservative and very strict on following the rules. Why we would stop them from playing is beyond me. I don't understand it, I never would. It's in your hands. It's a lot to put on your shoulders, but it's on you. It's our community, but it's also the future of these kids. My kid's trying to plan his future, he's trying to pick a college, he's trying to figure out everything. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, I'm Colette Gabriel, four-eleven Pathfinder Drive.
You speak up just a little bit, please.
Colette Gabriel, four-eleven Pathfinder Drive. My, I have a son, he's a freshman, he plays three sports. He has continued to play those three sports since the spring. The three teams that he plays on, there has not been one case or suspected case of COVID. He plays soccer, he plays basketball, and he plays volleyball. He just finished the, his freshman year with- He just finished the, his freshman year with Exeter, playing volley, or soccer. We had not one suspected case, we were not stopped for one time. Other sports and other schools might have, we did not. I wish we can, I want you to think about letting us play our fall sport, or winter sports. And the seniors really deserve it, they've put a lot into this. My son only being a freshman, it is a big deal too. It's his first time coming into high school, but the seniors need to have their year. Please consider letting them play their winter sports.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments.
Hi, I'm Beth Holtzman, 124 Pennsylvania Avenue. Sorry, I have to read, I'm late a few minutes. I want to begin though on a positive note. I want to clearly communicate that the reason that I'm so eager for my son to continue with in-person learning and transition to full days is because of how pleased I am and I have been with this school. Every teacher and staff member has consistently exceeded all of our expectations and has done their absolute best to foster a welcoming and conducive learning environment. I feel very strongly that in our hurry to look after everyone's physical health, we are greatly overlooking the emotional toll and developmental effects that isolating our children can have. As a school, especially elementary, you have a valuable resource in the psychosocial and emotional development of our children. However, many of our children are frustrated, overwhelmed, and grossly overstimulated by our education systems over reliance on technology. Under a fully virtual model, we are setting unrealistic goals for our children before they even begin their day, setting out the expectation that an elementary school student would be able to patiently participate and sit in a two-and-a-half-hour Zoom meeting. And that's just a start. For children who suffer with poor attention, the immediate message is that they have failed or something is wrong with them when they aren't able to engage and maintain focus for prolonged periods of time. I've watched my own son move from a happy, eager learner to a frustrated, sometimes angry and bored student. Since going fully virtual in the spring, there was a marked decline in his mood, affect, and motivation. The last few weeks, he's been able to return to school. For half-days, I see my child again. I recognize him as happy, eager to learn. He comes home excited, telling me about his teacher, his class, and what he's learning. I appreciate that. By moving back to a fully virtual model, you're placing the majority of your students and educators in an unfair position where providing the bare minimum with twice the work is the best-case scenario. As parents in a community, this standard cannot be accepted. I am by no means saying that most of us could do a better job or this is not a hard decision. I'm only asking that you take the time to consider the psychosocial, the emotional effects, the struggles our kids are having and our families are having, and all of the factors beyond just the immediate COVID statistics. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Carrie McCarty, 309, 3902 Penns Drive. As a community, we have dealt with COVID for the past nine months. In many ways, it's consumed our lives. As a district, faculty, and administration, you've had nine months to figure this out, to implement an executable plan, a plan to control and manage a classroom full of students in a virtual environment and to offer assistance to those students who are showing signs of struggle, which I imagine is, which I imagine this is a good portion of the student body. This district has haphazardly put together a plan, has relied heavily on asynchronous learning, and most disappointing part is that you aren't any more organized than you were in March. As parents and as a community, we have listened for months about how much stress the teachers are under, trying to adapt to a new way of teaching. Where has this grace been extended to the parents who have suddenly become the primary source to teaching a lesson? Some parents have been fortunate to be able to work from home, but their employer still expects them to produce results regardless of their profession. Some parents have been forced to quit their job and are now burdened with very serious financial burdens. On top of becoming their children's, their children's teacher, this board and administration has alienated all suggestions and insights from the community. So I ask the board this. How does this district plan to prevent these kids from becoming a lost generation? What have you done to prevent what was once known as a summer slide from becoming a school year slide? Will this district and administration extend the school year, even virtually, to ensure students have been afforded every opportunity to achieve passable grades? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Sydney Romulus, 360 Winks Bed Drive. Sydney Romulus. I think it's very important for students to have extracurricular activities and sports because a lot of kids depend on sports as their gateway to college. If we take away our season, you're also taking away a lot of students' chances of earning scholarships. We have been very diligent and safe about the way we go about things. And I can speak for girls' basketball and saying, "We have been playing all summer without a single case of COVID and we've used all the precautions and been very careful." I think if she get a chance to play sports just like fall did. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, David Volmer, 335 South Ballstown Road. I'm an advocate for full in-school learning. You know, the, the hybrid model was our way to get there. I can't even believe the board has to consider shutting this down and shutting down fall sports. I think it's a disgrace that the administration came and said this to you guys because I feel it's a cop-out from them. If there's a will, there's a way. We can figure this out and we need to for our kids. My son has been so excited being back in school with metal tech class, comes home, his hands are all dirty. Dad, I'm building a hammer. It's really, really cool to see him excited. You don't get that with virtual learning. Plus, he's on the swim team. He's swimming every day, he's in shape, and if he doesn't do that, he, he digresses. These kids need this. And I think it's the administration's duty to figure out how to fix this problem. And I think it's the board's duty to vote with the community because we're all here telling you what we want. And I think it's overwhelmingly, you know, in support of staying in school and keeping the fall sports. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. Jeremy Mock, 2804 Orchard View Road. I want to start off, I want to, I agree with the gentleman spoke before me 100%. I want to start off by saying, I'm a scientist, I'm a biochemist. The tests that we're basing these positive results on are not reliable tests. The amount of amplification that's necessary to get a good PCR test gives neg, gives false positives, whether you've had the flu or some other virus because it uses viral RNA as the basis. So putting out that in our 19606 area code is, is blowing up. It's flu season. You can't take that. There's no totally approved test just for COVID-19. It doesn't exist. So I want to state that first of all. So you can't use those numbers and say, "We need to shut down everything." We've been doing that for too long now and it hasn't worked. I also want to say a little bit, I want to speak personally about my son, who is a senior, and our family was blowing up during the virtual. He was not following along, he was not doing well, he failed most of his classes. These last two and a half weeks have been not 100% turnaround, but there is some light at the end of the tunnel. And he is in the delayed enlistment program with the Marines. And if he doesn't, if he, if, and he also has an IEP. So the IEP cannot be followed in the virtual environment. He's not getting what he needs and it's the, it's, it's Exeter School District's job to, to provide that. In-school is the only way that he gets it. And because of his IEP, he's actually in school four days a week instead of the, the two that most of the other kids are getting. And he's thriving in that environment and I want to see that stay. I've spoken to other kids, I have a stepson who said to me tonight when I told him I was coming here that he wanted to make sure that I passed along to you guys, that he does not want to go back to virtual, he can't learn that way as well. And I've heard that from many other kids. The last point I want to make is that these outbreaks, have we had any in the school? I haven't heard of any. I know you said tonight that you had to shut down Lorraine. Was that because of something in, in school? I'm not aware of that. But I have kids running around my neighborhood and other neighborhoods in our district, no masks, running around together, not social distancing, and not getting COVID. Right? So even if you're not putting them in school, they're, they're still out there running around getting what they need. Why can't you provide that for them? So they, so they, they can be protected. I am fully in favor of keeping both sports and school and I wish honestly that you would just open up full in, in-person school. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate your comments.
Timothy Redding, 4506 Edgewood Drive. As I was here before, I had mentioned that I'm a teacher with 19 years of classroom experience, but I also am a coach, a BCIA championship coach. I could go for hours upon the countless experiences that student athletes have within our county system, especially our school district. My family being fully funded with, or fully founded with student athletes. But today, I feel like this is a result of a self-inflicted wound. I believe plans have been rushed and again, we are reactionary and not proactive. We're deciding things with emotion and we, as a community, seek clarity of your leadership and safety of our families. Why we continue to flip-flop back and forth when there is a course and a plan of action going forward? Alter the plan and continue to adapt to the environment. And yet, changing our mode of operation leads us back to March with square one. I do believe that there's no default plan for brick and mortar settings. There should be no default plan for remote learning, learning, as well as giving up on a hybrid model. I believe that you as leaders within our community should continue to empower the students and the teachers to allow them to have bright futures. We have burnt-out teachers and some unmotivated students. And yet, we have to, and it is our job as community members, to uplift them and continue to provide resources both in the classroom and at home. We have families in dire need of support. And again, we need more collaboration and communication from this district to give them what they deserve. And that's a bright future in whatever setting you so choose.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, I think that concludes our, our comment period. I want to thank everyone who, who contributed their thoughts. Obviously, a very important topic for those of you who command here this evening and we will be taking action on the items that were referred to. Also, special thanks to the students who took the initiative and, and were passionate in their comments as well. It really, it's, I think it's very difficult for, for students to come up in front of a body like ours and, and, and present their, their thoughts and thinking. It was very well done. Thank, thanks, students.
I have a point of order inquiry.
Yeah, please.
Would we be able, or could the chair move the votes on these, I guess it's number nine, A and B, I believe, to the front of the agenda? Because I think that that is, you know, something of interest here for most of the attendees. So I'm wondering if we can move that ahead.
Yeah, I, I personally don't have any concern about that. Is there a general sense that that's okay with folks? Okay, so this is going to move into the agenda to item nine, student functions. And that would be, Mrs. Stratton, are you with us?
Yes. The administration recommends that the Exeter Township School District return to a full remote learning model for the period December 1st, 2020 through January 15th, 2021.
Thank you, Mrs. Stratton. I'm going to reiterate that because your, your comments were very, very faint. And the recommended action is the administration recommends that the Exeter Township School District return to a full remote learning model for the period December 1st, 2020 through January 15th, 2021.
Dr. Ham.
So we'll be looking for a second on that.
I guess I'll second it for the purpose of.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to offer an amendment to the motion. I have reasoning behind this, but Robert's rules, I'm just going to offer the amendment here and then I'll speak to that if, if it's seconded. I'd like to amend the motion so that it might read, "It is recommended that the Exeter Township School District move to full remote learning model beginning on December 1st, 2020, and in-person instruction to resume on December 7th, 2020."
Okay, so we have a motion to amend the current motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And any discussion?
Yes. The purpose of this amended motion is to try and see students return to the school buildings as soon as possible. Our standard should be fixed in their personal safety. This motion would permit the board to lengthen the full remote learning period if it felt it was necessary based on a number of factors, including student and staff infections, as well as the location of infections at our reorganization meeting on December 1st. However, I believe the best place for students to learn is in person. Not all parents and community members agree with that belief, which is why we offer a full virtual option that any child is permitted to use. I also recognize that many parents and students agree with this sentiment to the extent that they are currently sending their children to the buildings. Recognizing that cases are rising and our faculty and staff is being stretched to meet our obligations to students, I believe we should heed the counsel of the administration to pause our instruction, in-person instruction. I also accept their counsel that cases may rise in the aftermath of the Thanksgiving celebrations that students and parents will have with family and friends. A sufficient time after Thanksgiving will provide students with the opportunity that many strongly desire to be in their classroom alongside their peers, if not to work with them closely, at least to hear their voices. As we have a few dozen students and staff that are currently self-quarantining or have tested positive, I believe this timeline would also enable most students and staff to be able to return by the 7th of December to in-person instruction. One point that I struggled with in preparing this amendment is whether it would be wiser to provide a greater stability in moving to full virtual for a longer period as the administration requested. I find that argument very persuasive. However, I think my first purpose is to see students in the buildings because that is where they want to be. And our experience thus, thus far, has shown little evidence that the cases we are experiencing now are caused by exposure in the school. Just on a personal note. While I was driving yesterday, I got caught behind a bus where a young girl, probably in fourth or fifth grade, got off the bus and she was dancing across the street while walking home. And you can read that a couple of different ways. But I just saw the joy that school can bring to a lot of kids. And I don't want to see any kids lose that unnecessarily and I think that's why we should take the safe option to see them get more of that.
Thank you, Mr. Aaron. Is there any other discussion? Uh, Dr. Minor.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. I'd, I'd like to speak to Mr. Aaron's amendment and that amendment was something that has been similarly discussed in other school districts as well as in Montgomery County to extend a period of virtual learning past the Thanksgiving holiday to December the 7th. That would be an addition of four virtual days following the Thanksgiving recess. Our administrative team, our cabinet, has discussed that at length as to whether or not that would provide the desired benefit versus the, the potential cost. And so it is our recommendation that this amendment not go forward because we feel that the four days that would be added of virtual learning are more disruptive to the elementary students, the special education students who really need continuity of education to go virtual for four days and then come back into the school setting for very little benefit conferred in terms of. conferred in terms of separating from the holiday and getting through the winter months. So our recommendation would be either that we continue and have a consistent period of virtual learning as put forward by the administration, or in fact, return immediately following the Thanksgiving break.
So, Dr. Minor, if I can just maybe ask a clarifying question there. I think what I heard your suggestion was, is that if we were to go for a shorter period of time like I recommended here, that instead of doing that because of the disruption that that would cause to students, that it would be wiser at that point to continue in our current path. Did I understand that correctly?
That's correct. I know that's counterintuitive. I know that the idea that spending any time out virtually may be what the administration wishes in terms of modifying cases, but when we look at the issues that we're having with staffing, and I want to be really clear because I know that there's been a lot of social media chatter, and even this evening, some criticism of our teaching staff, that our teaching staff has worked incredibly diligently, continued to do so in the face of their peers having to be quarantined and supporting one another. And so, this is in no way a reflection of a demand on the part of our teachers. They want to serve our students, you know, and have been really, I think they're just a credit to the teaching profession, the people that we have here. The purpose of this pause, 24-school day in total between Thanksgiving and January 15th, 24 days that we would be virtual, while we are all extremely clear that in-person learning is the preferred learning modality for students. The reason that students do well in part in in-person learning is that they have a teacher who knows them, who they know, and who knows their subject, reading, math, et cetera. What we're experiencing when we have 42 staff members out, and even though they'll return from quarantine, and some already have as of today, it's a rolling situation because each and every day, more people are exposed to COVID and their jobs and their work from their family members. So taking some pause doesn't kind of flush it out of our system, and then we start fresh because the cases, for the most part, are emerging from either unknown sources or other sources. But the consequence is that our students in our in-person, as well as sometimes in our virtual learning settings, depending on where the teacher is placed, are being taught now by substitute teachers who may or may not have certifications at all, if they're a guest teacher, who may or may not have expertise in the subject that they're teaching. And then also, we're more and more having to rely on our special area teachers so that we're pulling our music teachers, our art teachers, our PE teachers, and asking them to teach reading and math, which does two things. One, they're not experts in teaching reading and math, and so ultimately, it deteriorates the quality of education. But two, it also prohibits them from teaching their specials and allowing students to engage in those subject areas, which we know are vitally important. So by having the additional four days, we don't see any benefit in terms of the ultimate drag on the system in terms of how many teachers are out and will continue to be out, and will likely to be out past the holiday and through the winter months, but we do see a transition for students, and again, for our youngest students, for our special ed students, for the students who, I think everybody in the community has a great concern about being on a virtual platform for four days in a non-emergency situation, only to return back to school, then potentially, you know, and then definitely be out again for the winter holiday. I just don't think the educational benefit is there with all those transitions in terms of the trade-off for health and safety. You're welcome.
So, Mr. Minor, of the, could you break down the number, you mentioned 40 people, but it's not all, 40 are not all teachers, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Japina. So as of yesterday, we had 42 staff members across the district in various capacities who were in quarantine. Today, that number dropped down. Many returned, but more people were added to the list. So it is constantly a rolling and fluctuating number as people move into quarantine and out of quarantine. And I do want to point out that one of the reasons that this is an unusual struggle, and it might be hard for people to kind of wrap their heads around, is that when staff members, whether they be teachers, bus drivers, et cetera, are quarantined under the Department of Health, they're quarantined for either a period of 14 days, and that's if they've had a contact that was temporary, or 24 days if they live with someone who has COVID-19. And so these very long stretches of absences take up a sub who we maybe normally on a 24-day period would use in six or seven different classrooms with a typical one- or two-day illness. Now they need to be there for that entire period of time, and they're off the market as a substitute. So I don't have the numbers in front of me, but Dr. Holler, who is joining us on the phone, does have those numbers. So, Mr. Japina, if it would be okay with you, I'd like to defer to Dr. Holler to answer that question in terms of the specifics.
Good evening, Mr. Japina. From my last count, we have approximately 32 staff members who are still being quarantined. We have nine who are currently are positive or presumed positive for COVID. And of those numbers, at this point, approximately about 12 to 13 are teachers, although this evening, I did receive an email from another teacher who currently is experiencing COVID-like symptoms. So as Dr. Minor stated, this is a very fluid situation. We are, no sooner having someone come off of being quarantined than somebody will then be quarantined again. Just as a point, I know there's been conversations about who's quarantining staff. When I looked at the numbers, we have, the majority of our staff are either being quarantined by the Department of Health, or they're being quarantined by their own doctor based on symptoms. The district has quarantined very few staff members. We take the initial step, but all of our recommendations are followed up by our phone calls to the Department of Health, and the Department of Health then gives us the directive as to what we need to communicate with staff initially.
Thank you. We did have a conversation, an information session with the board last evening. I think it was made very clear to us that the Department of Health has been not helpful. And so, I'm wondering, you know, sometimes what happens is when you can't properly contact trace, you just quarantine everybody. So I've had a personal experience with... I had a personal experience with a child who was potentially exposed. We were contacted by the Department of Health. I called them immediately and never heard back from them. And I know that you guys have experienced that similar thing, and what we're seeing, especially in healthcare across the county and across the country actually, is that when people can't properly contact trace, and it is a specialty, we immediately move to quarantine, which is an appropriate step. And so, I just sort of want to be cautious when we talk about quarantining. You know, that quarantine is a precaution. It doesn't mean anybody's sick, doesn't mean they're going to be sick, doesn't mean they're going to be positive, but I just want to switch gears for a second. So, you know, interestingly enough, and I've asked this question several times of our administration, when the governor shut down the schools on March 30th, there were 22 confirmed cases of COVID in Pennsylvania. So far, Governor Wolf and Dr. Rachel Levine have taken no action at all. And I'm just wondering, do we understand or are we aware of their thinking as to why they have not taken an action now with this spread? They haven't provided a guidance. Do they think it's less serious? Do they think that closing schools offsets, you know, closing school, you know, is a mistake because of some of the things that we heard tonight around social and emotional issues, food insecurities, people who aren't learning online, the academic slide? You know, you could make the case, and I'll say this just sort of snarkily, but you could make the case that maybe we don't need 12 years of school. Maybe we only need 11 years of school if we don't really think there's a slide. And I'm just trying to get my arms around this whole thing as a person who's not an academic or a teacher, trying to understand what other considerations are we thinking outside of just the clinical components of COVID that are impacting our students? Because we've talked mostly about the clinical part, which is not unimportant, but I guess I would ask is, what is your concerns? Do you have real concerns about the academic slide since March?
There are multiple parts to that question. There are multiple parts to that question, Mr. Japina. Your first question was about the governor and Dr. Levine and the actions that they've chosen to take. You may be aware that Dr. Levine had another press conference today. She, you know, put in stricter masking orders today, stricter travel orders today. There was speculation in the medical community and in the school community that she may take action again related to schools today, and she did not. As you're aware, the Montgomery County Health Department did take action last week unilaterally as a health department, and that Berks County doesn't have our own health department, so we don't have the ability to do that the way the Montgomery County school districts were impacted by the Montgomery County Health Department. I could not venture a guess as to the rationale. They have not, to my knowledge, indicated that the reason not to do that were any of the reasons that you laid out in terms of concerns about school. What I have heard them repeatedly say is that it is a local decision, that the schools in Pennsylvania have local control. They're run by school boards who are governing authorities who can choose to take that action on their own to close the schools. And that they have issued through the Department of Health and the Department of Education very clear guidance that when a county enters the state of substantial transmission, which is 100 per 100,000 people in an incidence rate or an over 10% positivity rate, that schools, the guidance is that they should go full remote. And so what they say repeatedly is that they have in fact given very clear guidance, and that they don't need to give an order because that's school districts, because they have local control, have the power to do that on their own without an order. So that's, you know, repeatedly what we hear. No higher-minded type of conversation like the one that you suggested they might have about the relative benefits or costs of being in school or learning virtually. As far as the concerns related to the summer slide, those are very real. They most greatly impact students relative to their reading achievement, and they most greatly impact obviously then students who are in younger grades, you know, first through fourth particularly relative to reading achievement. That's where we see the summer slide. Typically, the summer slide is made up when students return to school. So for instance, if we test a student's reading level at the end of the year in the spring, when they return in the fall, we'll often see that they come back at a lower reading level, and then with just a few weeks of instruction, they rebound and they're back up to a higher reading level again. They recoup whatever was lost in the summer slide. And you may be familiar with the concept of ESY, which is Extended School Year. And the reason that ESY or Extended School Year exists for special education students is because there is a sub-population of special education students who are not able to recoup, and that's one of the classifications and one of the determinations that an IEP team makes, that those students need to continue with school throughout the summer because they can't recoup when they come back like everyone else can. So there are genuine concerns, particularly for the special education population for whom recruitment is an issue. But we have had an extremely prolonged period of time, March through the summer, where I think by anybody's metrics, the quality of instruction was poor, nonexistent, not by any fault of the teachers. But I would actually argue, and was discussing this today, that one of the primary problems with schools functioning effectively in the spring was that we continue to be told that in two weeks, we would be open again. So it's just two weeks, and then we're going to be open again, and it's just two weeks, and then we're going to be open again. And if you remember, we kind of went on like that virtually through May, that we were going to, you know, we were going to be open again. And I think what that caused was a lack of seriousness and continuity relative to, we're going to be in this for a long haul, and we need to have a plan, and we need to develop a virtual platform and program for our students, because there was this constant expectation that we would be back. And so one of the reasons that our team has actually proposed a clear start and end date that goes over a period again of 24-school days is so that everybody is consistent and buckled down, that we're going to deliver quality virtual instruction during that period of time. And so, while I think no one would disagree that in-person instruction is superior to virtual, and in fact, is why cyber charter schools are so problematic and tend to score so poorly over time, that we're not having zero education. Our teachers are working very hard, and for some students, undoubtedly, virtual has been a real challenge, and other students have been successful. So what I would suggest is the superintendent and someone who's greatly concerned with student achievement, as I know the board is as well, is that we actually use metrics relative to student achievement. So for instance, take the STAR assessment that we give. We gave that assessment to students in the fall. If by the end of the school year, we haven't seen a year's growth in a year's time, we consider offering summer programming much like ESY. Hopefully by then, there's a vaccine, there's therapeutics, whatever it takes, that we can be back and in person. And we look at monitoring and adjusting the budget to provide that sort of additional support for those students who in fact didn't make a year's growth in a year's time. And there may be another group of our students who were quite successful and didn't make a year's growth in a year's time, and they wouldn't require those services. So I think that there is absolutely academic slide. There are ways to remediate that slide, but I would argue that being taught by a teacher who is non-certified because they're a guest teacher who has no specialty in the area because they're a content expert in physical education, not reading, et cetera, is equally likely to contribute to an academic slide as merely having a student in a school building with any adult in front of them versus a teacher who has expertise in teaching that student. So I think the risk in the situation that we're in right now with having so many staff members constantly out is much greater. And I would add that if we were in virtual for these 24 days, most of the staff who were in quarantine would in fact be able to teach virtually. They're home, they're well, they've been exposed, to your point, they're not necessarily ill. And so students right now who are being taught by substitutes or special area teachers could be taught virtually by their actual classroom teacher, and it's my position as your superintendent that the potential for academic gains being taught virtually by your actual teacher exceeds that of being in person with a teacher who has no knowledge of the content potentially, which is happening in many of our classrooms.
Thank you. So what happens if nothing changes on January 19th?
At this point, our recommendation is through January 19th because again, we're looking at when we expect to be the peak times of viral transmission. We've heard from medical experts from the C2C to CHOP that the two-week period following a holiday is when you have an increased spike. So we saw spikes after Labor Day, and CHOP recently reported that they saw significant spikes after Halloween. So we would anticipate a two-week spike period where we would actually be in a worse situation than we're all in now, which is virtually at our breaking point relative to staffing, and then again, after the Christmas and New Year's holidays. So by pushing this out to the 15th, which would then get us past that two-week mark, the 14th being the two-week period after New Year's Day, we're hopeful that we'll be out of the worst of it and that we'll be in a position where we have a force that's not constantly in and out of the schools. We believe that we can execute that. We're extremely pleased, and I was really pleased to hear a number of parents tonight talk about our hybrid plan. Again, it's a very challenging plan in terms of executing for safety, making sure that people are distancing and hand washing and all those sorts of things, but our students, our staff, their families have done an outstanding job. We're also confident that there's a lot of learning happening in that model. So we're eager to get back to it. We want to get back to it at the time that we think is most responsible and most sustainable. We, you know, there's exciting news on the horizon about vaccinations and other sorts of things that may support a more stable workforce. So I would offer that it is our full intention to be back on the 19th, and if the unforeseen happens, we'll have a conversation about how to proceed at this point. I think if one thing we're all clear on is, we don't know what the future holds with this pandemic, hour to hour, day to day, and so I don't want to, you know, sit here and proclaim to the board that I know on January 19th, things are magically going to get better. But what I can say to the board is that, you know, I can listen to the experts talk about the anticipation that the holidays are going to make what is already a very bad situation much worse, and that by getting outside of that with consistent learning in the middle is our best chance at keeping educational continuity and having our students be successful and enjoying a successful hybrid in-person, and hopefully eventually fully in-person third and fourth quarter. in-person third and fourth quarter.
Thank you. We made a decision to furlough staff in the first period of full hybrid, so, I'm sorry, full remote. So how would that process work if, well, I guess that motion actually is technically not on the table anymore?
So we were looking at the amendment first, so the amendment has to be voted up or down, or theoretically tabled, but I can talk about that in a moment. And then the motion would change depending on whether the amendment was approved.
I don't know if you want to save that question until we see whether or not we have to answer it.
I'm happy to speak to it or wait, whatever the board prefers.
So I think it might be better to vote on the amendment first and then see where that happens. And the pathway that I want to suggest here quick, I was consulting with our attorney, Sean Lockinger, would be to approve, well, if you agree with the sentiment that I've raised, would be to approve the amendment, and then we would table the motion based on the counsel that the administration has just given regarding continuing in-person instruction past Thanksgiving without interruption. So that would be my suggestion. And if you have a question about that for Sean, you just ask a point-of-order question and he'll tell you what it is. I think I've reflected it accurately, but you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, the, excuse me, the motion that you would be voting on right now, technically, what is on the table is the motion to amend. What you're voting, what you would vote on now is, do you agree that you would amend the original motion? You're not voting up or down on the amendment, you're voting up or down on whether you will agree to amend. Does that make sense? I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that before you actually get into a vote. This next vote you take, the motion is, I want to amend the original motion. And so the board has to consent to amend the original motion. Then, if, depending upon the result of that vote, we can talk about what happens next.
So just for clarity's sake, so then Dr. Minor has suggested then that if she'd prefer that we then do nothing. So does that motion then get tabled, or, you know, what happens to that original motion?
So...
Excuse me, a point of clarity about, the administration still holds very strongly that we would wish for the board to move forward with the original motion, which is full remote from Thanksgiving to January 15th. If it's determined that that motion does not want to be considered by the board and the only motion is the amended motion to only continue with a four-day extension past the Thanksgiving holiday, then the administration would prefer to just return immediately following the holiday and not have that four-day extension. So I just want to make sure people are clear. The administration still would like to move forward with our original motion through the January 15th date.
And to answer your question, if you would vote yes, if the majority of the board votes yes to amend the motion, then the original motion is dead, and the new amended motion is what is before the board then?
And at that point, like you suggested, Mike, I would recommend that we would table that motion then, so that we're not actually taking action. In effect, we're not taking action.
Can we discuss Hunter's amendment, the four days? Does, do we have thoughts on that, about adding those four days? You know, Dr. Minor shared her thoughts on that. I do have some, like, I believe that the best place for our students to learn is in the classroom. So I definitely want our students back in the classroom. And I believe also a majority of our families have chosen to send their children back to school, and I feel I represent the community, and that's what our community has also chosen. I do, I kind of, when we talk about the holiday situation, I'm wondering if it is best to send our kids back five days after they are celebrating a holiday? Or if we feel that's okay? Do we have enough staff? We talk about that, she talked about a, Dr. Minor talked about a rolling kind of group of positives, that we're always going to have this large group, but I do worry that that week after Thanksgiving, it might be larger than normal. So I just am wondering if anybody else is thinking about that four days, so we can decide whether or not we want to amend the motion.
I have a question along that, along those lines. Does there come a time when the numbers are so low, staffing numbers are so low, that we simply can't teach? I guess that's a question to the administration.
I believe that what Mr. Fidler asked was, is it possible that there could get to a point where the teaching numbers were so low that we couldn't open the building because we had inadequate staff? Is that correct, Mr. Fidler?
Yes.
I believe he said yes. So, yes, I think that that is possible, and we would have to determine, you know, what the course of action would be if we had inadequate staff, if we knew that going into the next day to cover all of the classes, what we would in fact do. You know, would we, for instance, you know, this situation was nearly happened at Reifton the other day, would we call and cancel sixth grade in-person, move forward with fifth grade? Would we close Reifton until the time at which we could secure enough subs? So theoretically, yes, you could get to a point where you simply didn't have sufficient adults to provide supervision to students, and then it would necessitate some level of closure in order, you know, that no students were left unsupervised or being taught by non-certificated, non-emergency-certificated staff members. So we have come dangerously close to that point a couple of times in the last week. And again, we have a plan laid out that we work through, that Dr. Holler works through, which begins with our substitute teachers, our guest teachers. We have emergency-certified a number of staff substitutes over the past couple of weeks. Then we move to our special area teachers and have them cover classes. After that, we would go to administrators, coaches who have certifications and pull them from their regular job responsibilities to cover classes, and then ultimately to administrators, as long as we didn't get to the point when we didn't have any administrator, you know, running the building. So that would be the mechanism that we would go through, and we have planned out A, B, C, D down the line. Dr. Holler, along with the cabinet, you know, who could we go to next, next, next once we run out of substitutes? So at this point, we've not hit that point where we couldn't do it, but it is certainly something that you could imagine would happen. And in fact, local school districts have had to cancel school because they didn't have adequate bus drivers, or they didn't have adequate staff at a local high school, for instance, had to do that. So that's a possibility. I would imagine that would be likely short-term until we could, you know, get some substitutes turned over, that sort of thing, but it is possible.
I would think that we just had a classic example of you using your authority to make such a decision with Lorraine. So technically, we already have that process in place, and you have used that authority for exactly that circumstance. I would suggest, though, that if there is a concern about the recruitment of teachers that, or substitutes in any category, we, again, talked about this in our information session, but it might be worthwhile to do some planning on our end to look at the potential of recruiting subs on a more long-term basis so that we become more attractive as a teaching entity versus another school district that might not have the foresight to put together a plan. I mean, we're in effect now in a very competitive market for those resources, so that might be an option for us in terms of recruiting staff to address some of those issues so that we don't find ourselves having students being taught by people who might not be certificated. And I would, I would challenge the board to make those, you know, whether it's business functions or whomever, to work with the Human Resources Department to figure out what we could do to ensure that we had a ready reserve of people so that we might be able to head off some of these concerns.
May I ask Dr. Holler, if you set aside Lorraine, which is a crazy anomaly right now that I haven't been able to figure out, can you tell me how many teachers are in quarantine for the other buildings such as the high school, the junior high school, and so on?
Yes, so at, well, if we take outside of Lorraine, Awatton Creek, we currently have one Reifton, we have approximately five, the junior high, we have one, and the high school, I believe at last count, we had three, I believe we had three. I just got another call from a teacher at Lorraine who is experiencing symptoms, and so that will be most likely another quarantine to that building as well.
Thank you. So if I heard correctly, for example, the high school, we are missing three teachers because they're being quarantined?
That's, that's correct. However, that's just, that's just the quarantine pieces. That doesn't take into account the other people that are out day to day. So for instance, Awatton Creek, they had someone that needed to be quarantined, and they had an additional three staff members who were out for a full day, and then someone who was out for a half a day. Teachers, along with everybody else, is taking this very seriously, where if they're sick, they do not want to come in because of the potential that it could be COVID, we're not obviously sure. And we weren't able to cover, we weren't able to cover three of, three plus of those classes, three and a half classes. Thankfully, as Mr. Japina mentioned, we have looked at trying to secure subs for a longer term basis. We did have somebody that was in the building that we were able to put into one of those positions, so we did do that. We've tried to do that at the other buildings as well. We were successful in doing that at Lorraine. So we had a teacher in there as well that we've been using. At Jacksonlawn, we haven't been as successful. At Reifton, we had someone that we were able to get in for at least one week. Dr. Freeze's building was hit very hard. He has the most number of teachers that are quarantined in addition to just regular absences. The junior high and the high school, they too, while it seems like it's not a lot of people that are being quote-unquote quarantined, it's also those day-to-day absences. So as Dr. Minor mentioned, every time we have someone who has to quarantine, that substitute is then tied up for anywhere between 14, 10, 14, or possibly even 24 days, given the situation. And so then that, it creates a domino effect where we're unable to put that person somewhere else. At the junior high, just last week, the HR team was able to secure someone for Dr. Flamm's building to be able to be, go in and be used. And the high school, they have a wonderful secretary, she works diligently to make sure that their classes are covered, but again, each day, they, Mr. Campbell walks in and he has a need for substitutes as well. We contacted every single substitute on our list and asked them if they would still be willing to sub for Exeter. Many of them said that they could not because they were fearful of coming in because of COVID. Once COVID is over, they would be happy to do so. Some of our substitutes are also parents, not just in our district, but other districts as well, and because their districts are virtual, they're unable to sub at this time because they are taking care of their own children. I've been in contact with Kutztown University, thank you to Mr. Campbell. I had a meeting with their department chair, who places student teachers, and they have 68 students that are graduating in December, of course, all of them are not from Berks County. So we are sending our postings to them as well. I've been in contact with a couple other people, universities, to try and get our postings and get substitute positions filled. But in addition to COVID, we have a severe teacher shortage in the state of Pennsylvania as well, which is not helping, and we're all vying for the same candidates.
Dr. Holler, did you, did you state that some of those quarantining were doing so because they weren't feeling well, not necessarily that they were positive? What are the guidelines behind that? So are these people that felt they were exposed in some way?
So we have people who, right now, we have seven staff members who have symptoms and have been in contact with their own family doctor. Some of those staff members were, we know, they were exposed because of a family member, and so they were directed to quarantine at this time. Even if they weren't symptomatic because they're in the home with someone who is positive, they would still have to quarantine. That's the guidance that we've been given. And, but there's other staff members who are just, from day to day, people get sick, or they have a child that's, who's sick. So any given day, we could have people being out because they're just ill, and the flu is, someone had mentioned the flu, the flu is going around, we know that, plus there's just other viruses.
So I just think for clarity that there are people who just get sick, they're not necessarily in quarantine, they're sick with the flu, or their child's sick with the flu. So in addition to people who are quarantined, there's just people who are, have struck through, you know, normal kinds of things, and they're also creating absences, as would normally be the case in a non-COVID year.
So if, if such as the high school, you have a teacher that's home quarantined, they're doing virtual teaching as well to the kids that are in the school with a proctor in the classroom? I know my son had that experience in one of his classes. It's one class where he was the only student in the classroom, and it was him and the proctor and him learning virtually on his Chromebook. Is that a situation where we can have multiple students in that same classroom with the one proctor doing their virtual learning, even if it's a different class, because they can focus on that one thing? Or is it something where you need to have a proctor for each of those classrooms, even if it's one kid?
I don't know if Mr. Campbell is in here, but if he would come down, that would be appreciated, because I think the issue is the complexity of the schedule itself. And so there would have to be multiple students who are one-offs, who had a situation like that in the same time period in order for a proctor to cover multiple kids simultaneously. But I'll let Mr. Campbell speak to it since he is more of an expert.
If we had enough of demands that we may be forced to combine classes to do some of that, it may influence the sort of instruction, or the sort of direction that we would give teachers in the situations when they were out. We would probably need to come up with some strategies to allow them, the students, to isolate a little bit so that they would be able to interact in a way that, with the teacher, that's not disruptive to others. So we would need to get creative with that. But it somewhat depends on the classes and the sorts of activities that they would be doing.
I'm in support of kids having the option to be in school, because I think it's definitely needed. And I understand the numbers that we're talking about. Bear with me, this has been a long day dealing with this. But I didn't go into this in supporting hybrid not knowing that we were going to find, we were going to have positives. I knew that from the beginning, and I kind of feel like I had hoped that the administration as well went into it prepared realistically, knowing that this is what the new reality is. So I'm not mentally prepared to just give up and say, okay, we're not... And when I, when I make the statements that I make, it's not that I don't have full faith in my superintendent, because I do. I have full faith in- I, I have full faith and trust in her that she can get us through this, just as I have full faith and trust in the administration and the teachers in our school that we can get through this. But my main priority are the students. And so that's where my, my thoughts and my votes are coming from. Thank you.
Can I, I just want to echo one thing that Ann said quick. Um, you know, I, I think that there's been a lot of charge, uh, on this issue, and a lot of people are angry, maybe justifiably so, maybe unjustifiably so. Uh, but Dr. Minor, um, has done, uh, great work. Um, and on top of that, I, I would ask that all of you believe me when I say that there haven't been, um, all conversations about giving up or throwing in the towel. There's been a lot of tears even shed in some of those conversations. Um, and she's, she's really worked with her full heart to try and do the best that she can. And, you know, the board is not going to always agree with her, and she's not always going to agree with us, but it's been a great relationship, and we're confident that she can do this.
I have a question for Dr. Haller. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the number of people who are in quarantine, do you know when each of those is coming back? And can you give us a picture of what the staffing will be as those people come back? Just assuming for the sake of arguing, argument for right now, assuming there are no additional quarantines, while be, what is it, 40 who are on quarantine?
So at the height of this, there was, there was 42. Um, the way that this played out is the first week we were, um, back in school, we started with 14, then we moved to 18, then at one point we had, um, 10, and then just compounded. Um, so we got to the height of it, which was 42. Because people are quarantining at different rates, because they're being, um, identified at different times, um, and they have a different amount of time to quarantine, we are now have, we're now down to 32 people that have to quarantine. Um, we, looking at the dates, yes, we keep track of when they have to, um, when they are starting their quarantine, and then how many days they have to quarantine. All of that is done in a summary sheet, and there's contact tracing that's done, that we report to the Department of Health. Um, so by the information that I have thus far, give, you know, hopefully if we don't have anybody else, um, the majority of our staff will be done quarantining, um, by the time we will come back from the Thanksgiving, the Thanksgiving break. Um, we would have two remaining staff members that would still be on quarantine. And again, um, one of the tough things to navigate is people that are with, that have someone in their household who was a positive, and they test negative, that's, that person has to quarantine for 24 days. Um, so we could be looking at quarantines that are 10 days, 14 days, or 24 days, um, given whatever the circumstance is and the guidance that they receive from the Department of Health and their, um, their physician.
Okay, great, thank you. I, I would like to, uh, echo some of my fellow board members' comments. Um, I, I ran, my, my slogan for my campaign was kids first, and everybody seemed to like that. But I used it not because it sounded nice, but because I, I believe that we should all put the kids first. And this, this time is, uh, that we're going through is a real test of that. So I'd like to ask the kind of question that I used to hate as a PR guy, but I used to love as a reporter. It's a what-if question. And what if we just operated on what I'll call for now, fire drill mode? We all are prepared for fire drills. We, none of us like them, but we all have to have them. Uh, we're all trained for them, we prepare for them, we drill for them. We have a fire drill, it interrupts class for an hour or two, it's actually kind of fun, and then you come back and you get back to work. What if we just operated under that mode? We keep the hybrid in place with the understanding from the public, from teachers, from the administration, from board, from bus drivers and cooks, that if an emergency occurs, that we respond as if it's an emergency, and then we act. But in the meantime, we keep doing what we're doing, which is a great benefit to the kids.
So I feel that, I feel that we are here asking a lot of questions and listening to a lot of data and a lot of numbers and who's out and for how long, and when are they going to come back? And I feel like we're not listening to the experts, we're not listening to the educational experts. Uh, I heard, uh, positive comments with Dr. Minor, that there's faith in her and the team. They didn't just pull this here idea out of the air. You know, they gave it a lot of careful thought about what was going to be the safest thing for our students and our staff. And, you know, when I talked last week, it, you know, it's, we, we tend to think, you know, it's just the students, but it's also, we have, we have all the adults too, that are, that are in the building. So I feel like, you know, they came up with this here plan that they think is going to be best for our students and safest for our students and staff. We also have, are not listening to the medical experts, the CDC and the Department of Health. They came up with guidelines for when it would not be safe for children and students to be in buildings. And that was when we, when the county went to substantial. And now we are in double, more than double that amount that it took to be in substantial. So I, I, I think, I feel like we're layman and trying to make decisions about what's going to be safe and what's not going to be safe, and can we come back without, you know, having a lot of people get sick, or, you know, someone dying? We're trying to make that decision when there are experts that are making, you know, have made that decision of what is going to be safe. And we're not talking about staying out. I, I've, I've heard some people say we're going to be out for nine weeks. Dr. Minor said it was, it was 24 school days. So we're not looking at trying to stay out for, for months, we're looking at 24 school days. So for me, I'm going to vote no on the amendment because I, I'm not in a, I'm not capable of making a decision of whether it's going to be safe or not, for, for children, adults to come back. So I'm listening to Dr. Minor and her team, the educational leaders that we hired to do this job, and I'm looking at the medical experts and what they're saying about, about this pandemic. And yes, we all know that in-person learning is the past, nobody's, nobody's disagreeing with that, we know that. But we are in the middle of a pandemic, and we see the cases increasing, and just within, I guess, what a two-week period is where we saw our cases in, in our zip code area, double, more than double. So I, I just feel like we're not listening to, to experts. So I, I will be voting no on this amendment because my thing is we got to keep people safe.
I'd like to call a question.
What was that, Hunter?
I'd like to call a question.
Okay. Yeah, so we've had plenty of conversation here, plenty of discussion. Let's kind of clarify where we are.
Could I suggest we have a roll call?
You're asking for a roll call?
Yes.
Okay. And this is, uh, simply to amend the motion. So this isn't a decision regarding, uh, you know, the outcome of this particular motion, it's just a decision to amend the motion.
Could you, Dave, could you explain, um, we went through this once before, and I kind of got lost, I don't want to get lost again. Could you explain what a yes vote, uh, does to this amendment and what a no vote does? What, in other words, what are we voting for?
Go ahead. Okay, yeah. My understanding is a, a yes vote would amend the current motion and simply change the, the, the through date from January 15th to December the 7th. So the, the motion would read, the, the administration recommends that the Exeter Township Schools return to a full remote learning model for the period of December 1st through December 7th, 2020. That's the amended motion. You vote yes to that, and you're voting to approve that. If you vote no to that, then, then if there are more than five, or five or more no votes, then that motion fails, we go back to the original, um, motion.
May I, may I ask, uh, I guess, I don't know if it's a point of order or not, but in the event that that motion was amended, you know, would it continue to read that that was the recommendation of the administration when it is in fact not? So that language would be changed as well, right?
Well, the one that I read is it is recommended. Uh, I can, I don't know if it's necessary to really change that because I think we understand that it's not.
Well, we can, we could change it and just say, um, uh, it's recommended, and then we just don't necessarily have to say that the administration recommends.
Oh, it does not say the administration recommends. It, it says it recommend, it is recommended.
Well, you're looking at maybe a different copy than mine.
I think he's looking at the motion he made.
It says it is recommended that the district move to full remote.
Right, but we don't know who's doing the recommending. I always prefer the active voice to the passive voice.
Well, for the sake of Robert's rules, can we just all accept that it says what it says? Because if not, what we'll have to do is we'll have to vote this down and then make a new amendment, and then vote again, and then make a vote on that.
Yeah, you'd have to amend the amendment. So, yeah, I think we can agree to, I think we know the content here. Okay, so I think we're prepared. Any other questions before we, um, regarding the vote, before we take the vote on the, on the amendment? Okay.
Say that the administration recommends?
I'm sorry, didn't hear that.
Are we going to say that the administration recommends?
No, John, the administration is saying that it does not recommend. So I, I think the amendment is striking the administration.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, all in favor say aye, and this will be a roll call vote.
All right, this is a roll call on 9A amended. Uh, Hunter Aarons?
Aye.
John Fidler?
No.
Dr. Ann Herring?
Aye.
Dr. David Hamburger?
Aye.
Michael DePina?
Aye.
Dr. Sharon McLendon?
No.
Hurry Miller?
No.
Michelle Stratton?
Aye.
Allison Wilson?
Yes.
Six yes, three no.
The motion carries. So, so the next step would be to, to vote on the motion?
So what I would suggest based on, um, the counsel that the administration gave, based on this amendment, and, and now this motion, is that we would move to table. Now, I'm not making that movement yet because if we move to table, that has no debatable portion. So I just want to make sure that everybody, if somebody wants to say something, can say something before that.
So we, so we're gonna, there, there will be a, before there's a, a motion made, there will be a recommendation to table, but there will be a discussion prior to that.
There technically is a motion on the floor right now. It's the amended motion is now on the floor. It's, it's been moved and seconded.
Okay, so then there can be further discussion at this point. Okay. So we'll open it up for further discussion on the motion.
So could you read the motion again, please?
The motion now says it is recommended that the Exeter Township School District move to full remote learning model beginning on December 1st, 2020, and in-person instruction to resume on December 7th, 2020.
Thank you.
So if there's no further discussion, I would move that we table this motion.
Is there a second to that?
Can you explain, I'm sorry, I'm thoroughly, why are we tabling this?
We're not tabling it, just tabling the discussion so we can take the vote.
No. So the, the purpose of the tabling is that nothing would change. So based on Dr. Minor's comments regarding this motion, were that it would be wiser just to continue as we're currently going. So we would still come to school on December 2nd. So what I'm suggesting is by tabling this motion, that's what we would do.
But then that doesn't give other board members an option to have their voice heard if they believe that we should have some time off.
Yeah, so, so I can retract my motion because that's the motion that I want to vote on, but I take your point. You know, I want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to discuss that first because the tabling motion has no opportunity for debate. I know this is really Robert's rulesy, but, so I'll, I'll retract my motion. So if anybody wants to say something in favor of this amended motion, you know, now would be the time to do that.
I, I would have voted for the, that particular motion if it, if it would have said, um, that Dr. Minor would have agreed to it. The reason that I think that is a problem for me is, it sounds like it's an all or nothing proposition. Either we do it or we don't. And I think that's kind of like puts us into a, a bad precedent in terms of our, our thoughts on that. I, I think the, the problem that I have with it is, the, the other thing I have a problem with it is, is that sometimes when we, we're, we have an all or nothing for everything with this. Like, for example, Lorraine, definitely, close out for week, two weeks, whatever that time needs, frame needs to be. But there's other schools that are, are that, you know, I think we should try to see if we can try to segment this a little bit more in terms of making it a policy of like, hey, high school's doing well, keep it open. Jackson Wald, not doing well, close it out. Lorraine's doing well, open, you know, open it back up. I think by doing this all or nothing process, it kind of inhibits all the, everything. And that's kind of why I have that view on this. That's why I voted against that because basically by having that all or nothing, you know, it kind of just, you know, inhibits everything. I think we should try to see, I mean, it's only been two weeks, you know, and we have, so there, there, there has to be a time for where we can say, Lorraine, yeah, you need to do that. But the other schools are doing okay. Let's see what happens. Let's kind of go through the, the motions here. If it gets worse, then we'll, we'll, we'll move to what we need to do. I, I don't know if anybody else agrees with my, my idea on that.
Well, can I just, can I just comment? I think what you're, what you're alluding to is what we currently have in place right now. I mean, we have a, we have an emergency, emergency authority resolution that we passed earlier this year that would allow Dr. Minor to use her discretion in terms of closing schools individually, or classrooms individually as needed, based upon her judgment of the conditions, which could include both conditions of COVID or just the issues associated with staffing, which I think have been clearly outlined this evening. So, you know, uh, I think if we didn't take any action at all on this and, uh, either voted down or tabled the motion, you know, we would be in a position to just continue with what we're, what we've done, which seems to me to be, to be working to some degree because it really does reflect the fact that, you know, COVID does exist, and it's here, but the real dilemma that we're dealing with right now is the, um, the quarantine. You know, and the fact that we have so many, so many staff at, at this point that are in quarantine mode, and not that we necessarily have, you know, transmission issues, we've got quarantine issues that I think has really kind of created the major dilemma for us. So the absence of staff is a real problem, and it, and it will result in, I think, the, uh, a situation where, you know, you know, specific, uh, locations would have to be closed. But I would, I would agree that that's a reasonable, you know, thought or solution.
Yeah, I agree with what Hurry's saying. Don't we now, Christie, have, some of the schools have just a, a handful of cases and quarantines?
That's, that's correct. The, the issue is that we don't have, we don't have substitutes to cover the quarantining people and, and in addition to people who are just getting sick. And it's because people, our substitutes, many of them are fearful, they don't want to come in, and we already had a small substitute pool. So some of them who may, would have subbed in the past are now won't sub because they're scared to come in the building. And then the, there's others who would have liked to have subbed, subs, but because their own children's schools, not Exeter, but they're in another district, are virtual, they're unable to sub, um, for us at this time. Um, so that's the dilemma, and there's a, a teacher shortage in Pennsylvania. So we're not the only district that's, that's facing this difficulty, and we're all kind of struggling to, to get the same small pool of people to come sub for us.
Sure, I understand, thank you.
Dr. Minor made a very good point about if we are in virtual and the teachers and staff who are quarantining, but they're not sick with the virus, would still be able to teach virtually. That's one thing. The other is, I, I'm, I'm failing to understand why we want to wait until more and more people get sick. The other is, I, I'm failing to understand why we want to wait until more and more people get sick. And, and although there's people who get sick and they don't, you know, they, they don't have a really rough time, there are other people that do, and there's a lot of things, you know, the long-term effects that they, you know, are finding. So I'm failing to understand why we want to wait until more and more people get sick or die.
Well, Sharon, you know, I, I take, I take your point seriously. You know, I think my motivation behind this is really the idea that students need to be in school. And the motivation behind that is because they're both performing well in school, they're performing best when they have in-person instruction, and they're performing best when they can see and sit near and talk to their peers. And I think that's really the motivation behind this. So I take your point seriously, and I think what we need to ground ourselves in is our experience thus far, which has shown that spread is not happening in our buildings.
For our buildings, our buildings and our homes are interconnected. So you can say someone didn't get the virus in school, but everybody that's in school goes home. So those two things are interconnected with this virus spread.
And I, Sharon, I agree. I, I think where we're making, at least where I'm making this decision, is based on the idea that thus far, our experience has been positive. You know, people have, we have cases, those overwhelmingly are coming from outside contact that does not occur in the buildings. And I think we should be concerned with the idea that students or staff would bring something back from the buildings to their homes. But that has not been our experience thus far. Beyond that, I think that our motivation really needs to be what's in the best interest of the students here, and I still think that that means them being in schools. In addition to that, you know, there's, I think, one point that I really would like to make, which is that, you know, I lost it there, actually. I'll come back to it for a minute.
So do you, are you saying that because we don't feel the virus is being spread in school, that it's safe in school?
It's safe in school.
Right, but the people who are in the school, the children and the people who are working in the school, are, are, are still getting the virus. Would you agree that since we went back to in-person, that numbers have gone up? They're not going down, they're going up. So it doesn't matter where, you know, if they're getting it in the building or out of the building, they are coming back and forth between.
Please, please.
And number, would you agree numbers are going up?
So Sharon, I, I think your, your point is, is well taken, but again, that spread is not occurring in the buildings. Beyond that, we have a plan that requires students to wear masks, they have to social distance, they are social distancing in their classrooms with the setup that's made there. We are providing the best opportunity that we can, and I believe, and I think that many members of the community do, which is why they've entrusted the district with the education of their students during this pandemic, that school is safe, and we should continue under that premise, and I think that we are safe to do so.
Mr. Aarons? Mr. Aarons, I would just like to make one point of clarification, and that is that in the two-week period, we did in fact close Lorraine because we believed that there was spread happening in the school. So I just wanted, for, for the record, that we haven't not had any situations where we believe there was spread in the school. We believe that that was occurring in Lorraine. So just, again, for the record, that, that that was the case.
I'll amend my comments and recognize that there has been extremely limited spread that has occurred in the school buildings. And part of that had to do with a lapse in our procedures that we have since corrected, and we have made sure that it's not going to happen again.
I don't know that that was the case, that it was a lapse in the procedures that that happened, but your point is taken.
A question for the administration, I don't know if it's Dr. How or Dr. Minor. Do we have situations where a teacher who is in quarantine without symptoms but has to be home, couldn't that teacher teach her kids in the classroom from home?
Uh, Doctor, Mr. Fiddler, yes, we are, we are doing that. We're making all those accommodations. However, in order to do that, we still need to have a body in that room. We still need to have a person in there. And it needs to be, it needs to be someone who's either a substitute teacher, a certified teacher, who's a substitute, or a guest teacher.
So not someone who's certificated necessarily?
Correct. And, and we, we, we don't, we don't have the number of people to be able to, to do that. We're running out of those people, should, I should say, in addition, because.
Is that person teaching, or is that person just there for safety and security reasons? Because the law says we have to have a person in the room?
They're assisting students when needed. Mr. Campbell spoke to that a little bit ago, where we, and, and Dr. Herring was familiar that we're doing it. We have someone in there that essentially acts as a proctor, and then we have the teacher zoom in. As Dr. Minor stated, we, we believe that our teachers are the best ones to be in front of our, of our children. We stand by that. So we, anytime that we can have our teachers, if they're not ill, be the teacher in front of the class of those students, that we're going, we're going to do that. But in order to do that, we still need to have an individual in that classroom, especially obviously at the elementary level, because there's more students who are in those classrooms in, in that model.
Do you know at this point how many, how many teachers we have teaching kids in the classroom while the teachers are teaching from home?
I, I couldn't say on a day-to-day basis. I know that that's something that Dr. Freeze and I have talked about over the course of last week, over the weekend, and even the beginning of this week, because he had a number of teachers who were either ill because they're ill, or perhaps quarantining. And he, he was doing that with his, his staff. But again, we, we still needed to put an individual in there, so it might look different day-to-day.
Okay, thank you.
So what, what I like to say is, you know, I'm going to trust and believe in Dr. Minor's judgment on whether a school is going to be open or closed, just like they did with Lorraine. I think we just need to leave that to her, to her discretion. If she feels that it needs to be closed, we've given her the, the power to do so. And if there is two schools that need to be closed, if there's three, if it's all of them, that, that will be up to her if those numbers get to that point. I think what we need is, I wish we had more guidance from the Department of Health in terms of giving us an idea of, okay, we need to do this. I mean, they're not, the thing about it, the Department of Health can walk in right now and shut down any building in any facility in the country, in, in our state. They don't, they're not doing that now. So that's kind of where the problem lies with this. It should not even be a decision of the board, in certain, in my opinion. It needs to be something that should have been done with the Department of Health, in terms of these, these type of decisions. But in the interim, we, we are, we are human beings, we, we, we do make choices, and we have to go and just choose what is right for our kids. And, you know, I have a kid myself that's in the school, and he's, he's not doing the best with virtual learning either. But, you know, I, I think there is a good, there's definitely some need for human interaction. But I also am concerned about their health, and I'm also concerned about the teacher's health. So it's kind of like a real tough, tough situation. I tell you that these teachers are very brave, they're very strong, and I trust that they're keeping themselves together through all of this, this, this burden that's going on. And I, I just want to make sure that, you know, first, the kids are the, the number one priority, and then, and, you know, also the teachers are as well. But, you know, if there's ways of doing it safely, we need to make sure that we're doing it safely. I would like to see, honestly, the teachers that come back, i- if we can do this, to say, hey, you know what, I tested negative, I can come back. You know what I mean? As soon as possible. Instead of like these things where we have to sit here and wait for, for those things to happen. But, but there's, there's, there's things that we just don't have control over. That's all I got to say.
Here's the thing, that the Department of Health did come up with guidelines that we aren't following. So they came up with guidelines, you know, they was, they're the experts, and they did come up with the guidelines about the number of cases and being substantial. So we do have guidelines that we could follow.
So what I'd.
Go ahead.
What I'd like to suggest, you know, I've heard a couple of people, I think, agree with Dr. Minor's recommendation based on this motion, I want to be specific about that, which is that we wouldn't take action versus the authority she already has to close individual buildings, like Hurry suggested. So what I'd like to suggest is that I'll make a motion to table this motion. This is, it's going to, Robert's rule's complicated, I apologize. And in effect, if you voted yes for that, then we would not be considering any type of pause of in-person instruction. If you vote no, then we would go back to this motion where we'd have an up or a down vote. So I will motion to table, and that, that would require a second then.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? We're going to have a roll call vote?
And again, could you clarify what, what a yes vote does and what a no vote does?
Mr. Fiddler, we're, we're tabling the current amended motion, which is that it's recommended that the Exeter Township School District return to a full remote learning model for the period December 1st through December 7th, 2020.
And if we vote yes to this, there will be no disruption in what we're doing right now, correct?
It removes this, essentially removes this motion from, from the, from consideration. Mr. Fudd.
That, what does that mean in, in reality, that things would continue or things would not continue as they are?
I can't hear what he said.
Yes, what that would mean in reality, that things would continue or, or not.
What that would mean?
Yeah, that they would continue, John. That they would continue.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm not, I'm, I'm a little confused on this. So we're, say it again, what a yes vote or a no vote is going to mean?
Okay, Dr. McLendon, a, a yes vote means that we will be taking off of the table and removing from consideration the current amended motion, and which also includes the original motion in this case, that the school district return to a full remote learning model for that period of December 1st through December 7th, 2020.
So a yes means we're in favor of, of students of this motion that he made, where, where they would go from December 1st to December 7th, would be remote? That's what a yes means?
Now, what, what this means is that, you know, the, the current hybrid program that we have in place will continue with Dr. Minor's continued opportunity to use her emergency authority to individually close classrooms or schools.
That's a yes vote?
If you vote yes to this, essentially what you're doing is saying, we are tabling this motion, we are putting it away, we are not considering it further tonight, at this point. We're not going to consider it further. So when you say yes, in a sense, the motion for these purposes goes away.
It's like it never existed, yeah.
Are we then going back to the original motion that's on the table about the, the other dates up to the 15th?
No.
We're going back to that then?
No. That, that original motion has been successfully amended. Is there any further question?
Yeah, and so what is a no vote going to be?
A no vote would fail this motion, and then we would still vote regularly on the motion that's on the table.
On the amended motion, yeah.
Yeah, if you vote no, you're saying, I want to vote on the motion, the amended motion that is on the table right now. It would, it would be subjected to an up or down yes/no vote, if you vote no to tabling.
And just to be clear, if we vote yes, that takes the motion off the table, and we continue with the hybrid model currently in place?
Yes.
That's correct.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Any additional clarification questions by board members? Mr. Fudd.
Okay, roll call vote on 9B, motion to table the amended motion. Hunter Aarons?
Aye.
John Fiddler?
Yes.
Dr. Ann Herring?
Yes.
Dr. David Hamburger?
Yes.
Michael Chapina?
Yes.
Dr. Sharon McLendon?
I guess I'm a yes, if I'm clear on this.
Hurry Miller?
Yes.
Michelle Stratton? Michelle Stratton?
Could, can she signal a thumbs up if she's on the screen?
Michelle, we can't hear you.
Allison Wilson?
Yes.
Do you want to hold for Michelle, or?
Is there some way we can communicate with her?
Perhaps, I, I did this during an earlier meeting, maybe she could text Brian or, or Dave?
Well, the motion would carry regardless.
Well, either way, we have eight.
Yeah, it would, would carry regardless, but we'll depend on her vote and record her vote, hopefully, when it comes in.
She's saying, she's saying no.
She's saying no?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Eight-one motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Hamburger, I would ask that we move to 10A, which is the pausing of all athletics and extracurriculars.
Okay, I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Chapina.
So item 10A is the recommendation, the administration recommends that the Exeter Township School District pause all athletics and extracurriculars for the period of December 1st, 2020, to January 15th, 2021.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion?
I have a question, if it's not necessarily discussion. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
We're trying.
Okay. Could we, could we hear some numbers about our athletes who have either been quarantined, tested positive, exhibited symptoms? In other words, I'm looking for how severely, if at all, the virus has affected our athletes, say, through the fall quarter?
Would that be Mr. Legath? Is he available?
Yeah, I don't know if Mr. Legath is.
Mr. Legath, can you come up to the podium, please?
Mr. Fiddler, could you please repeat your question?
Yes, I'm looking for some numbers about how our students in the fall sports programs have been affected, if at all, by the coronavirus. Either positives, symptoms, quarantines, no, were, were they affected? I, I, we've heard eloquent comments from the public. I'd just like to hear from the administration how severely, if at all, our student athletes have been affected.
So in the fall, I would not use the word severely. There was things that came up, just like they came, they come up in everyday school. No team was quarantined in the fall sports for a positive case in the regular season. There were a couple potential cases, but nothing that shut a team down from a positive case for extended period of time.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion?
Can we do a roll vote on this as well?
Sure. Roll call vote, Mr. Fidler?
Could you please read the motion again? Thank you.
Okay, it's the, and, yeah, it says, "The administration recommends the Exeter Township School District pause all athletics and curriculars, extracurriculars for the period December 1st, 2020, through January 15th, 2021."
Thank you.
Can I say something before we vote? What, if we are not going to be going virtual with this in-person school, why are we even considering doing it with sports?
We have to consider it because it's on the agenda.
Any additional questions?
Call a question.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hunter Ehrens?
No.
John Fidler?
No.
Dr. Ann Herring?
No.
Dr. David Hamburger?
No.
Michael Chapina?
No.
Dr. Sharon McLendon?
No.
Hurry Miller?
Nope.
Michelle Stratton?
She said, "I am a no for 10A."
Okay.
Allison Wilson?
No.
Nine noes.
Okay, thanks, folks, for a very challenging portion of our agenda. We'll take a two-minute recess at this point right now, allow folks to exit if they need to. We'll be back in two minutes.
Are folks back from on the Zoom call? Are you guys ready to go?
Yep, we are here.
Okay, great. Okay, as soon as we see Mr. Japina up here, we'll get started. Okay, we're going to move forward in our agenda. We're up to item four, which is minutes. And again, I want to remind board members we're using consent agenda this evening. So if there's an item on the agenda that you want pulled from the consent agenda for additional review and discussion, please signal that in advance of the presentation on that section. It's recommended that the board approve the three sets of minutes, October minutes, as outlined in the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries nine zero. Item five, treasurer's report. It's recommended the board of directors approve the treasurer's report from October and the payment requests from October through November.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Board policy. It's recommended the board of directors approve for first reading the three policies that are listed in the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. It's recommended that the board of school directors approve the two policies in the agenda for second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries nine zero. Business functions, Mr. Erns.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approves the following business functions items one, two, three, four, and five. I'll just make a quick note that four and five are new additions, but the first was discussed at last week's meeting and five is budget transfers.
Second. Sorry, wrong button. That was the correct answer, Mr. Japina. That's why you got the bell. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item nine, item eight, personnel, Mrs. Wilson.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approves the following personnel items. One.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approves the filing personnel items two through seven.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Student functions, item nine, Mrs. Stratton, if you're available.
She can talk now, but she asked me to read it. So it is recommended that the board of school directors approves the following student function items one and two.
Second.
And that's B one and two.
Okay, yeah, I was just looking for that.
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. I think we've covered item 10, athletic committee. Item 11, business functions, Mr. Erns.
It is recommended that the board of-
We're not hearing anything.
Can you hear me now, John?
I'm not sure what happened, John.
There's some notice on the, yeah, there's an error message on the Mac here. John, can you hear me?
I can.
Excellent. It is recommended the board of school directors approves the following, I read the wrong one, business functions items one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item 12, curriculum committee, Dr. McLendon.
So item A is the October enrollment report is attached for board members. Item B, it's recommended that the board of school directors approves the following curriculum programs, curriculum committee items, items one, two, and three.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to some of the committee reports. Facilities committee, Mr. Fidler.
Yes, we are scheduling a meeting tentatively, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, for December 1st, which will be our same night as the reorganization meeting. Is that still on the calendar, Brian?
We're not really sure. I think Mr. Erns and I stopped to discuss if we want to stay for a long meeting that night. Would you be up for that? Or I guess we can discuss that offline.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, that could be a longer evening. We've got reorganization and a workshop following that.
Okay, we'll discuss that. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Mr. Fidler. Personnel committee, Mrs. Wilson.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Policy committee, no report. Student functions committee, Mrs. Stratton.
No report.
Thank you. Technology committee, Mr. Miller.
Nothing to report. Once again, guys do a great job. Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Exeter Community Education Foundation, Dr. Herring.
Thank you. Yes, on Friday, ECEF will be donating $7,675 for portable Wi-Fi spots for Exeter Township School District students in need of Internet access. This check brings us to the amount to almost $18,000 in support of COVID-19 projects for Exeter Township School District students. Coupled with this amount with the TIPS book project, this total comes to nearly $26,000 in contributions. We thank all our many contributors for donating to these projects in light of us canceling our biggest fundraiser of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. BCTC Joint Operating Committee, Dr. McLendon.
So we met on Wednesday, October 28th, at the Ole campus, and also it was on Zoom. So other than the action items that we voted on that are in your JOC meeting briefs, Dr. Kraft, the vendor of that meeting, was spent reviewing the hybrid learning plan that they're currently on. He noted that they're getting to maximum capacity to socially distance. The BCTC has to accommodate 16 different sending school district schedules. So like for schools that are fully in person, they were meeting five days a week. That was changed to four, and they want all students to meet at least a minimum of two days per week. They're going to continue in their in-person learning as long as, you know, possible and safe to do. They have experienced some cases of COVID, just like, you know, we are in other school districts. There was at both campuses, and they did send a letter home. I believe that letter went home yesterday to parents with information. Dr. Minor, I don't know if you've met with, you know, if you have any other updates or additional information about BCTC. I know that you've been meeting. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
I can just add that BCTC has a number of staff that are in quarantine and some of their individual programs, you know, may have to pause while they obtain the proper number of staff for them, but they're doing their absolute best over there to try to maintain the classes. So they're waiting now as the 16 sending districts kind of reconsider their plans for this winter season, and I think they may, you know, need to reshuffle in light of whatever those plans are. So they continue to be very diligent over there, I will say as well. Dr. McLendon, I know you recommended everybody attend the BCTC open house, and, you know, they had done an excellent job with that. So they're working very hard, and as you mentioned, it's extremely challenging with 16 sending schools. So they continue to keep us apprised.
Right. Thank you for adding that because I did forget that they did have to close a couple of programs because of the staff. So our next meeting, typically we meet the fourth Wednesday of the month, but our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, December 10th. It's reorganization meeting, and that will be at the West Campus in Leesport. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. McLendon. BCIU Board of Directors, the next meeting of the board is this Thursday, November the 19th, and their board meets, this board meets, both virtually and in person. I would comment also on the COLA meeting that the BCIU offered, but I think maybe I'll allow Mr. Fidler to speak to that, and I know he has his legislative liaison report. So I'll turn to Mr. Fidler.
Well, I was actually going to talk about the, attended an update today, Dave, about the education law center and public interest law center lawsuit. I actually don't have anything on the COLA. So could I just say a few things about the program today?
Yeah, please do, and then I'll just make a few comments about the COLA meeting.
Okay, thanks. The, this was a lawsuit filed in 2014, and the stat, it was a kind of a status report, and the three points that the attorneys made today, they're asking the court, the Commonwealth Court, to declare that the current system of funding Pennsylvania schools is unconstitutional, order the legislature to cease using an inadequate funding scheme, and order the legislature to create and maintain a funding system that will enable all students to meet state academic standards. Where they are in the case, discovery has, they have reviewed more than 100,000 pages of documents, have taken more than 70 depositions, have filed 13 expert reports, and 11 rebuttal reports. There's been no attempt to have the case dismissed, and the attorney said that a trial is expected early in 2021. What do we need to prove? They asked that the, what is the constitutional standard? The education clause, has it been met? And how will you know? Does it require more money to meet it? Or is it the students' fault? And under the equal protection clause, are the disparities in funding justified? So it was a very informative session. It's a work in progress, but it was an update that I thought was valuable. And while it strictly isn't the legislature, a judgment would require action from the legislature, and I just thought the board and the public might be interested in that update.
I attended that webinar today as well, Mr. Fidler. I thought it was, you know, really informative, and that one of the interesting things they did was to kind of profile reading school district and its, you know, funding as a, one of the poorest school districts in the state relative to, I think it's New Hope-Satsbury School District, which is probably one of the wealthiest, and there was a $5,000, I think about a $5,000 per student discrepancy in terms of, you know, the way, you know, they are, they fund a per student. And, you know, it kind of really, you know, clarified the fact that, you know, students are getting, I mean, you equate quality of public education to, you know, the amount of money that you put into it, and they're pretty, they're trying to draw that line, I think, between lack of funding and, and lack of opportunities for students who are disenfranchised and attending, you know, poor, poorer school districts. So it was, it was a really, I think, compelling argument and an important argument, and continues to point to the fact that the state is really failing to meet its fiduciary responsibilities to school districts in not only funding all public education in a more aggressive way, but also how there remain to be, we remain to be a state that has one of the most inequitable systems of school district funding.
Right. I think it's important to remember that as enthusiastic as the school districts' side was, I'm sure the other side is also very enthusiastic. Of course, we didn't hear from them, but the court will hear from them when the trial starts, but still and all, it was, I think it was an important update.
Thanks, Mr. Fidler. I'd just like to kind of mention about the COLA meeting that was, I think it was last week. It featured the PSBA or PASA president, Pennsylvania Association of School Administrators president, and he pretty much gave an update to the Council on Legislative Action, COLA, which is sort of all the superintendents as well as representatives from the school boards. He gave a pretty much of an update on current legislation in Harrisburg. But I think a lot of the discussion featured, you know, issues associated with charter school reform and the current phenomenon that we're experiencing right now of, you know, additional students who are attending as a result of COVID crisis and the impact on school district budgets, and the need for charter school reform. We have a significant problem in that area that's just not being addressed by the legislature, and all school districts are being reminded how important it is to kind of pass the resolution, which we have already, and, and also, I think, take whatever they can, but steps that they can take to be advocates for public education and speak to their legislators about, you know, the need to, to make changes in the formula for fund, in funding our charter schools. Thanks, Mr. Fidler. We're going to move on to township borough liaison, Mr. Japina.
I have no report.
Okay. Mr. Japina, did you have an athletic report that you wanted, or anything that you want to do relative to athletics?
I do want to mention one thing because we did overlook it. I had mentioned about a issue with the water polo team in protecting people's protected health information. I won't mention names, but there was, I believe, and maybe Dr. Minor or Mr. Legathis here, we could confirm that I think there were four COVID positives that resulted in the final game of the season being postponed. I'm sorry, canceled. You might have more, Dr. Minor, I don't know.
I don't have anything additional.
Okay, before we adjourn, are there any board members who seek to be heard at this time? Mr. Erns.
Just for business functions, quick, you know, I just echo what Brian had mentioned earlier about trying to schedule a facilities meeting, and we'll, we'll be sending an agenda out. There's one drafted now, but that meeting is probably going to feature a discussion about budget goals like we did last year because we're getting into December when that's going to begin.
Is it my understanding we're combining the two committees at this, for this meeting? Or is this just going to be a business functions committee meeting?
It's my understanding that we were combining the meetings. Now, when I drafted the agenda that I sent to Brian, I'm not sure that the budget goals were on there because I think at that point we were still thinking it'd be November. So depending on where we get, it might require that we have a second meeting in December because I want to make sure that we get ahead of that, and there's another issue that you brought to my attention, Dave, that we need to address as well.
Yeah, I mean, there were, there were two or three, or even maybe four, facilities issues that I think we need to kind of make sure we, we cover. So I don't know how much time is going to be available for that, whether the meeting should be separated or whether they should be as one, but I think there's actually enough information in the facilities to kind of have a meeting in of itself.
So I'll talk with Brian about that.
Okay. Any other board members who would like to be heard at this time?
Dr. Hamburger.
Yes, Dr. McLendon.
Okay, so I brought the items forward for the curriculum, but I didn't really talk about the curriculum meeting. Can I say a couple things? I know it's out of order. Is that all right, or no?
No, you're good to go.
Okay. Well, we, we actually already voted on, but I just want to say we met, the curriculum committee met last Tuesday. It was actually our first in-person meeting. We're meeting now are currently from 5:00 to 6:30, the second Tuesday before the board workshop meeting. And in that, in our meeting, Dr. Minor and Dr. Winters did a presentation on the district achievement data, and that report was attached last week to the last week's agenda, attached for board members. And these were the two items that we actually voted on, and we did talk about them last week, but I'll just mention it because it was, Dr. Winters and Dr. Minor gave a presentation on the targeted support and improvement plan. That plan was also attached for board members, and then Mrs. Devlin had presented information on the interactive read aloud and phonics and words program. So in our next meeting, we'll be coinciding with our board meeting with a different date, Tuesday, December 1st, at 5 o'clock in the Reifden Library. So sorry about that. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. McLendon. Anyone else? Before we adjourn, I just want to mention that we will be having a reorganization meeting next Tuesday, and that'll be followed by a board workshop meeting for December.
Two Tuesdays from now.
I'm sorry, is that two weeks from now? Okay, losing track of time. Yeah. December 1st. Right. That's not next week. It's after Thanksgiving. All right, thanks, guys. So at this time, I'll accept the motion for an adjournment.
We'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we're adjourned. Good night, everybody. Thank you.